Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday night, April the 19th, 2021 Business Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. The Board has just reconvened from closed session. And I would ask that the viewing audience please join us in a moment of silence to observe in memory Nick Ambrosio, a senior who passed away from Hickory Ridge High School. And now, Board members, we will start with our opening ceremony, 5.01, and if everyone will stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, I need for us to amend the agenda tonight to add 12.05, which would be approval for policy numbers 3225/4312/7320 Technology Responsibility Youth and 4600 Student Fees for the Interim Superintendent's Recommendation. May I have a motion for adding that to the agenda, please?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Farr and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. The agenda is set. We will move to the approval of the Personnel Recommendations, 7.01. May I have a motion that the April 19th, 2021 Personnel Recommendations be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye. Hearing none, motion passes. We will move to 7.02. May I have a motion that the closed session minutes of the March 8th, 2021 Business Meeting be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And now, we will move to our recognitions and start with 8.01, and we will begin with Dr. Keisha Cohn for the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Schultz, and good evening to everyone watching on the live stream. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce you to our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April. Thank you to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April is Darian Barnett. Ms. Barnett is an art teacher at Rocky River Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "Ms. Barnett is an amazing art teacher. My children adore her and look forward to her lessons each week. They can't wait to see what the lesson is for the week and what medium of art they get to practice." Ms. Barnett has been so creative and engaging during the pandemic in her videos and lessons to ensure students are learning various art concepts, whether they are meeting with her in class or staying at home to learn remotely. Although encore classes are not at the forefront of the academic curriculum, it really has helped to break up the day and take a break from math, reading, and writing that kids must do. As a parent, I appreciate all that she is doing for the school and the children at Rocky River Elementary School to ensure students are well-rounded. She absolutely deserves recognition for being a fantastic art teacher. Ms. Barnett, thank you for your creativity you bring to your art lessons and for engaging your students and keeping them excited about their art encore classes. Congratulations on your selection as the April Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Cohn. And now, we will move to 8.02, and we'll have Mrs. Ronnie Boone for the Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members, and good evening to all of our viewers on the live stream. Tonight, we will recognize students and staff at R. Brown Elementary School and Concord Middle School with Impact Through Education Awards. As always, we extend our thanks and gratitude to Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors, for its continued sponsorship of these awards, and to Concord Trophy for providing the printing expertise in creating the plaques that we award to our winners. Both of these businesses are wonderful partners, and we say thank you to each of them. First up for our honorees this evening from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School is Grady Gray Carpenter IV. Gray is an amazing student. His determination while being remote is remarkable. He does not let the necessity of being a remote student get in the way of his learning. As he floats in between doctor's appointments for his heart condition, he never misses live instruction. Gray is always friendly, hardworking, and encouraging to other students. He has shown positivity throughout the school year. He always has a smile on his face and is always eager to learn. He is a great example of perseverance, flexibility, and optimism. The R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School Bobcat family is proud to present Gray with this Impact Through Education Award. Our second honoree from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary is William Pablo Larambe. William is a hard-working student who always tries his best on every task he is given. He perseveres even when assignments are hard and always shows up for extra help when it is offered. He loves to take notes in his math notebook and always takes it home so that he can use it to do his homework. He never gives up and is never discouraged. He is a role model for his classmates. You can always count on William to have a smile on his face. From the teacher perspective, he is that student you can put in any group because he's friends with everyone and always finds the good in a person. He exemplifies the qualities that teachers wish every student had. William's teachers comment that his positive attitude makes him a joy to teach. They all agree and are glad to have William as an R. Brown McAllister Bobcat. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award, William. Our next honoree from R. Brown McAllister is Mr. Jared Smith. Mr. Smith graduated from Concord High School and Appalachian State University and began working in Cabarrus County Schools in 2002 at Mount Pleasant Middle School. He taught middle school English Language Arts there and at CC Griffin Middle School, where he became the librarian in 2013. Mr. Smith earned a master's degree in library science over the next few years and then joined the R. Brown McAllister team, where he has been the media coordinator for the past two years. Here's what he had to say about his job. "Libraries are such an essential part of a school and a community, so it is an honor to have that role. Being a librarian is pretty much the best job in the school, as the librarian gets to work with all the fun things in the school, in the coolest place in the school, and gets to provide students and teachers a chance to do the same." According to his peers, Mr. Smith is a valued colleague and teacher at the school. He is eager to teach his students, and students are eager to go into his classroom. Jared lends a hand to his colleagues any chance he can with a smile on his face. He reaches out to teachers to see how he can help support instruction and work with individual students. He is always willing to do whatever is needed to help children. He was selected as the R. Brown McAllister Teacher of the Year this year and as a Bobcat Beam of the Month, in addition to repeatedly being nominated as an Impact Through Education Award recipient. For these reasons and so many others, Mr. Smith is an essential part of the R. Brown McAllister family. From the book character days to car rider line, even with temperature checks this year, to mentoring students, make space, and a thousand other things, Mr. Smith is an amazing asset to the Bobcat family. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award. And our final honoree from R. Brown McAllister is Mrs. Kathy Austin. Mrs. Austin is very connected to Cabarrus County. She's married to a retired CCS educator and has four grown children who attended Cabarrus County Schools, along with 11 grandchildren who call her Mema. Mrs. Austin says that her working in Sunday School is where she first realized her love of children. She also shared that when she started working in schools, she found out quickly that she was drawn to helping all students, but especially the ones who may have personal or academic needs. She states that this gives her the opportunity to share kindness and her love with them. Mrs. Austin is willing to help any student or staff member, whether it's one-on-one or in a small group of students. The students always feel important, and Mrs. Austin's caring demeanor makes children feel at ease. She's reliable, respectful, and responsible. According to the teachers and staff at R. Brown, Mrs. Austin is very flexible and always does what is best for students. Over the years, she has helped tackle many projects. Whether painting hands and feet for parent gifts, planting seeds, cleaning up spilled milk, moving furniture, leading a guided reading group, or working with children to practice a math skill, she has a smile on her face and enthusiasm in her voice. One colleague specifically noted, "I am thankful to call Mrs. Austin my colleague, friend, and McAllister family member. It is clear Mrs. Austin is an integral part of the R. Brown McAllister family." Congratulations to her. Now on to our honorees from Concord Middle School. Our first honoree is Desmond Monti. From the moment Desmond Monti entered the doors of Concord Middle School in sixth grade, he has been a focused, self-driven role model for his classmates. His interest in learning and solving problems makes him a stellar IB student, embodying most, if not all, of the IB learner profile traits. Known as such a polite young man who puts forth all of his efforts toward his work, he is an amazing task completer and active participant through teams. Being a virtual student this year has not stopped Desmond from also excelling as a musician. Band director, Mr. Knup explains that Desmond also always shows up for class and strives to be a better musician. He always asks relevant questions that dive deeper into musical concepts. He turns assignments in on time and does it to the best of his ability. Desmond's core teachers describe him as having the utmost character, integrity, and consistency that it takes to not only be a successful student, but a great young person as well. Desmond's social studies teacher, Mr. Moore, explains that he has no doubt Desmond will be well-equipped and have the mindset required to achieve great things in whatever he chooses to pursue. Now, three years later, as an eighth-grade honor student, Desmond is setting his sights on the IB program at Concord High School. And Concord Middle School staff know he will excel as an IB scholar. They wish him the very best and congratulate him on being selected as one of Concord Middle's 2021 Impact Through Education Award recipients. Our next student honoree from Concord Middle School is Natalie Niebrich. Natalie Niebrich is an eighth-grade student at Concord Middle, and she exemplifies the IB mission statement as she is an inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young lady who helps to create a better and more peaceful world. Natalie is very active participant in her school career, both in the classroom, band room, and on the field. As an honor student, Natalie is known by her teachers for having a genuine desire to challenge those around her and be challenged in the pursuit of knowledge. Mr. Moore, her social studies teacher, notes that Natalie exceeds expectations that he sets, as well as expectations Natalie sets for herself. Natalie is also a member of the minor band. Her band director describes Natalie as always prepared for class, practices and prepares her music, and does her best on her assignments. She gets excited about musical concepts and jumps to answer the harder-note name flashcards. You will also find Natalie competing as a lady minor in volleyball, track, and basketball. Her track coach recalls, "I was so fortunate to coach Natalie. She was one of the most hard-working and determined athletes I've seen so far. She was always willing to try all events and has perfect attendance. She communicated her questions and concerns, ensuring that she was meeting my expectations." She has this tremendous desire to succeed on as well as off the field. Although she will be greatly missed at the middle school level, Concord Middle staff members are excited for Natalie as she plans to continue in the IB program this fall at Concord High School. Congratulations, Natalie, on being selected as one of Concord Middle School's 2021 Impact Through Education Award recipients. Our next honoree is Robin Walker. Robin Walker is completing her fourth year of teaching at Concord Middle School. A native Charlatian, Ms. Walker graduated from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte with a degree in psychology before becoming a registered veterinary technician with a degree from Penn Foster College. She then entered the field of education through the lateral entry program, first as an IB design teacher and then moving to a science teacher. Her background in life sciences is just one of the many strengths Ms. Walker brings to her science classes. Known for her effective, hands-on approach to education, students thrive in her classroom as they learn to make connections in their conceptual learning. Ms. Walker always looks to find real-world applications to her lessons, which engage students as scientists and inquiries in their everyday surroundings. Her creativity knows no bounds, from utilizing sewing skills, demonstrating cell parts and functions, to studying global patterns to predict the weather not only here in Concord, but also to locations on the other side of the world. Designing engaging and analytical projects is just one of the many reasons she is a successful instructor in the IB classroom. Ms. Walker also is a strong leader within her PLC by utilizing her organizational skills to complete long-range planning. She also examines standards by breaking them down to appropriate-sized chunks of instruction and analyzes student data to know which students require enrichment and those who just need more practice. In encouragement to her students and her peers, Ms. Walker often looks for ways to serve without being seen. She is the behind-the-scenes champion who may leave a pick-me-up delectable treat in the workroom or show up on a soccer field because a colleague needed an extra set of hands to run practice. She is an asset to Concord Middle School, and we congratulate her on being selected as one of the 2021 Impact Award recipients. Congratulations to Ms. Walker. And our final honoree this evening for Concord Middle School is Ms. Sharon Goney. Sharon Goney joined the staff of Concord Middle in the spring of 2020. Born in Costa Rica, Ms. Goney moved to the United States with her family at the age of seven. She quickly added a second language to her abilities by learning English in her school and from her mother, who was already fluent in English. Ms. Goney spent most of her life in Miami before moving to North Carolina three years ago with her husband of 24 years, their two adult daughters, and two English Bulldogs. Found in the front office of Concord Middle, which is known as the hub of the school, she is in the middle of ringing phones, doorbells, requests from staff, but in the midst of all of this, she always speaks with a kind and genuine word. Parents, staff, and students are always greeted with a smile and an offer to help when contacting or visiting the school. Spanish-speaking parents are thankful they can communicate and make their requests with confidence on behalf of their children. Joining the staff during a pandemic was not intimidating to Ms. Goney as she quickly became a vital member of the team before ever meeting most of the staff in person. Ms. Goney is a solution finder who loves people and especially loves kids. She is the face of Concord Middle School and represents hard work, dedication, and kind character. She is an overall achiever in all that she does, and Concord Middle School leaders and staff are so grateful to have her as a part of the minor family. Congratulations on being selected as one of Concord Middle School's 2021 Impact Through Education Award recipients, Ms. Goney.
Thank you, Mrs. Boone. And now, Board members, we will move on to 8.03, and we'll ask Ms. Nicole Sandor, our AIG Coordinator, to come present the North Carolina Governor's School for 2021. And while she is coming in, we will just say thank you to our SRO that's here with us tonight. We appreciate always the representation at our meetings. Thank you for being here. Ms. Sandor?
Good evening. The North Carolina's Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. Faced with many challenges to their program this past year, the wonderful staff at Governor's School has worked diligently to create a meaningful and memorable experience for the students that attend Governor's School this coming summer. I am certain the students will enjoy their time and will represent Cabarrus County very well. This year, 13 Cabarrus County Schools' high school students have been selected to attend the Governor's School Summer Program. We are here tonight to honor these accomplishments. I will now announce each student and their focus academic area. First, we have Shre Shande from Hickory Ridge High School, and will be going in the area of social sciences. Simran Shinwala from Northwest Cabarrus will be attending in the area of math. Alana Esposito from Cox Mill High School will be attending in the area of social science. Kyla Foreman Andrade from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending for choral music. Shiva Gadareddy from Cox Mill High School will be attending for natural science. Navyasri Gadamakala from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending for social science. Noah Habarakar from Northwest Cabarrus will be attending for choral music. Maryam Martin from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending for social science. Carissa Rebel from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending for math. Anish Satish from JM Robinson High School will be attending in the area of natural science. Grace Smith from Concord will be attending in the area of natural science. Driti Suresh from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending in the area of math. And Ashton Tong from Northwest Cabarrus will be attending in the area of math. And we wish all these students well, hope they have an amazing summer, and we look forward to hearing all about it. So, thank you for all your hard work.
And thank you for being with us tonight. Cabarrus County Schools is blessed with definitely many gifted and talented students and staff, I think the Board will all agree. And with that, we are going to move on to our superintendent comments, 9.01, and I will turn it over to interim superintendent Brian Schultz.
Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone and to everyone viewing at home. Just a few comments. I won't be as long as I was last time. I was told I was very lengthy last time, so I'll keep it a little bit shorter, but there's a lot to celebrate. Just want to welcome everybody back from spring break. Students in grades six through 12, upon return from spring break, came back in Plan A, attending four days a week, Monday through Thursday. I visited some schools last week, and as has been the case all year, just really, really impressed with the extreme preparation that's taken place to be ready for students, the engagement of our staff, the engagement of our students. They all should be really, really proud of how they've responded during these extreme times. Based on last week's attendance, we have an overall 64% of our students are attending Cabarrus County Schools in person. At the elementary level, it's about 72% of our students are in person, 70% at middle school, and then 49% at high school, attend in person. So just remind everybody, we're in this final stretch. We have seven weeks of school left. Let's make it the best seven weeks of this school year, and let's finish really, really strong. I'd like to celebrate a little bit. We'll be doing a little more celebrating tomorrow. I'm excited about that. We'll be recognizing our Teacher of the Year, but we do have our finalists. Let me let you know who they are. There are Tabitha Paisley, who is at Beverly Hills Elementary School, Amy Hicks at Central Cabarrus High School, Alice Graham at Concord Middle School, Jennifer Burkemeier at Harrisburg Elementary School, Melissa Capitz at Wolf Meadow Elementary, Ashton Berry at WR Odell Elementary. And then, I hope you've seen the highlights, because they're really cool, on YouTube. It's an Apple a Day video series on social media. It's also on TV21, and it features each one of the finalists. So if you've been able to learn a little bit more about each one of them and passions they have for serving the students that they have in front of them every day. And then, just be sure to tune in tomorrow for their Teacher of the Year announcement. That'll be live on the district's Facebook page, so we're really, really excited about that. We talked a lot about during this pandemic, mental health, and be able to respond appropriately to that. Our Student Services Department is offering several live sessions to community members interested in learning how to enhance coping skills and emotional well-being for students and adults. These sessions will feature the Reconnect for Resilience and Listening Circle models. They're free to anyone in the community. For more information, visit the Student Services page on our district website by selecting Student Services from the Department's menu and then selecting Parent Support During the Pandemic from the list on the left side of your screen. April is Occupational Therapy Month, so we celebrate our occupational therapists that we have in schools, and a lot of times, they're our unsung heroes that go about from school to school to serve our students and do a really great service to our students. So happy Occupational Therapy Month. Your holistic and customized approaches to evaluations, interventions, and outcomes help students and EC programs participate in school and social situations. So, just a little bit on COVID. We do see our indicators up slightly a little bit this week. What we'll notice, though, with our staff quarantines, and that'll be posted, if it's not already, it'll be posted on our website today, our quarantines for our staff have remained pretty stable and down a little bit, so that's a good thing. That means that those vaccinations are working and keeping our adults in schools serving students on a regular basis. What we will see now is probably a little bit of an uptick in the quarantines that we have in students just because of the close proximity. So when that does happen, we'll probably see a few more quarantines. And then, we are going to continue the health screenings that are in place. Those are actually optional at this point, but it's kind of one of those things that if it's not broke, we're not going to try to fix it. And we do see some little uptick in the trends, so we're going to continue those health screenings, the temperature checks, and the questions that we have when students enter into school. And then, lastly, to make it more accessible for students who are 16 or older. Ms. Carpenter, I thought of you when I was planning this, because I know you've been after these vaccines. So we're going to make it more accessible for students that are 16 years and older to be able to get their vaccinations. We will be announcing here shortly, I've been working with the Cabarrus Health Alliance and making sure that we have vaccine clinics at at least one of our high schools that'll be available to all students in the district, and we'll have multiple days and times for that, so that parents will do it, some on Fridays and some after-school, so that parents can attend if they would like to go with their student to do that. I just also want to say I was able to present the Cabarrus County Schools budget, so all the hard work that the staff and the Budget Committee and everyone has put into that, I was able to highlight that with our county commissioners last week. Felt like that went really well and really able to highlight the fine work that everyone has done for that. So, you know, we kind of cover everything in our budget, and I just think from rooftops to classroom teachers to all the supplies and everything that custodians need, it's a really diverse budget that tries to meet so many needs that we have here in our district, and I was proud to be able to present that to our county commissioners last week. Some reminders, our virtual teacher fair is coming up on April 23rd, so visit our district website to learn more about that and get the word out. And then, to registration for program choice for kindergartners is open through April 30th. So if you're a kindergarten, if you have a rising kindergartner or a Nova Rising kindergartner, and they are interested in any of our choice programs, they need to register by April 30th, and you'll find that in the Find It Fast section on our website under Programs And you'll find that in the Find It Fast section on our website under Program Choice. As registration for kindergarten continues, so make sure that you also visit the district website on how to register your child just for school. And that's also in that Find It Fast section. And I'll kind of close under the theme of Youth Art Month. We celebrated that last week. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there, but I just want to congratulate all of our Youth Art Month artists and winners. That's a mouthful for me for some reason. You can view the Youth Art Month digital gallery in the Fine Arts Focus section of the district website. And I just want to highlight the interim superintendent choices. That was Holden Martin at the elementary level. He won the 2021 Superintendent's Choice Award for a piece entitled "Water Droplets." Holden chose pencil and colored pencil as his medium, and his work features these really, I mean, they look so realistic with the pencil that he used to create these three-dimensional-looking water droplets on there. And I just want to recognize, Holden is a fifth grader at Cox Mill, and his teacher is Ms. Lazarazzo at Cox Mill Elementary. And also, Varja Ezalon, she was selected as the recipient from middle school on her piece entitled "Owl." She chose colored pencil as her medium, and she featured a rainbow-colored great-horned owl whose feathers descend into autumn leaves. It was a really beautiful piece. Varja is an eighth-grade student at Hickory Ridge Middle School, and her teacher is Ms. Carell. And then lastly, the high school winner was Matt McDougall. He was selected, and he actually had photography was his medium, and it was entitled a piece that was called "Joy." And it's digital photography, and it was actually of kind of a distant shot that had some in-focus and out-of-focus Christmas tree lights. And the word joy is personally meaningful for me, because I believe in whatever situation we encounter, we can find joy in it. And sometimes that joy comes before, during, or after an experience, but realizing that joy is largely dependent on our perspective. Matt is a senior at Central Cabarrus High School, and his teacher is Mrs. Landers. Lastly, on the topic of joy, I wanted to email and give a shout out to, and this comes from a parent. So, this says, "I wanted to email and give a shout out to our absolutely amazing EC bus drivers for our son Luke. We are blessed to have our amazing crew, the same amazing crew as last year, and I just wanted to share with you about our experience with them. David, Sue, Betty, and Dee are the kindest and most joy-filled drivers I have ever met. As crazy as this year has been, it's so reassuring that everything's going to be all right when I see them each day." So, and it goes on, but I just wanted to recognize, that's from a parent of one of our EC students. So thank you so much to David, Sue, Betty, and Dee for bringing joy to our students and also bringing joy to our students' parents. With that, I'll close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just going to open it up to comments from the board members, and we'll just kind of work backwards. So I'll start with Ms. Adcock. Any comments or questions for Mr. Schultz?
No, that was great. I loved that ending on joy. We all need lots more of that.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Farr?
I'm good.
Mr. Walter?
Well, I got permission.
Ms. Blackwell?
No, thank you.
Ms. Sandage? Well, I will work backwards, because I want to make sure that the viewing audience understands it wasn't the chair or the board that said that you were too long-winded. We absolutely enjoy the updates and the information completely, as you can tell. So it was definitely not us. With that, I also want to say absolutely, you did an awesome job. I know Ms. Klutz will agree with the presentation to the Board of Commissioners with the budget. You did a really, really good job. We appreciate the partnership that we have with the Board of Commissioners anyway, but that just validated the relationship that we have, the way that went that night. We have a great relationship with our Sheriff Shaw's office, having representation with the SROs at all of our meetings. We appreciate that. We are at a good place with our board, with our partnerships in this county, and I know we all appreciate that. I know that the board is happy to be back at the DICE, I'm assuming. I'd like to get nods of the head. We know that, for the viewing audience, absolutely, technology and audio is much better from this point here. We know that the viewing audience can hear normally better than when we're on the floor. We get comments and feedback about that. So we would like to hear tonight that this is a better situation, too, from the viewing audience's perspective, and I'm sure we're going to hear that. So with that, I'll also say that I'm going to have Ms. Adcock give us a report from one of her liaison positions.
Thank you. I want to talk about the Cabarrus County Education Foundation and what they've been working on, the Teachers Gift Catalog. They do this gift catalog to help inspire teachers and staff when they feel valued, and they really can instill more passion for learning in their classrooms, and our students really thrive. So this year, we had an amazing response to the catalog with 849 orders, which is really a lot for this. And it's closed this year, but they're going to open it back up next year for Teacher Appreciation Week. I wanted to just also give a shout out to the Student Advisory Council, to the superintendent, and the board intern Finley Edwards, who are working together to participate in the delivery of the teacher gifts. It's going to be very special for them to do this. We, as a board, also have an opportunity to be able to sign up to participate in those delivery of gifts to teachers as well. And those dates are going to be May 3rd through the 6th. So just wanted to shout out to the Cabarrus County Education Foundation and what they do to help our students, our teachers, and our schools to succeed.
Thank you for that. And board members, if you'd like to take that opportunity, just contact Ms. Adcock and let her know what your availability is, okay? With that, before I get ready for the guest speakers and start that part of the meeting, I would also like to recognize our board members. And I want to tell you how much I appreciate y'all's availability over your weekend time and the responses that you've had with emails and getting information back to the staff and making sure that everyone understands what your questions and concerns are regarding realignment and, you know, some of the other issues that we deal with. We've been dealing with a lot with this board for several months now. And I know it's been very, very time-consuming. It's very taxing emotionally, physically, and many other ways. But thank you for your participation. Thank you for getting that to us. You know, it's just extremely important that we make these decisions, and they're hard decisions. But it's really good when everybody understands where each one of us are and the staff can respond to that. So I just want to say thank you for that. So here goes with this piece of it that we have to actually state to the general public. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Speakers must sign up with the board clerk via email at, and actually, it's now carina.neville@cabarrus.k12.nc.us, no later than the 5:30 of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. Speakers must include their name, group name, if applicable, address, and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. Speakers will need to remain in their vehicles until the guest speaker section of the meeting begins. Speakers will be called into the building by an assigned number given to them after signing up. Speakers must wear a mask and will be temperature screened before entering the building, and will need to exit the building immediately following their comments. During the public comment period, the board chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. If an unusually large number of people requests to speak, a majority of the board may decide to reduce the time for each individual or to require the designation of a spokesperson for each group of persons supporting or opposing the same positions. At any time, the board may establish additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. Generally, personnel, confidential, and specific school-level matters will be handled in accordance with the board's grievance policy and/or the appeal rights afforded under the North Carolina General Statutes and are not the proper subject of the public comment portion of the board meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. And also, there should be a statement that states that for persons representing a group, they actually have five minutes. And with that, thank you, board members. I think there's some information being passed out by one of our speakers. Let me grab that. Thank you. Yes? Okay. So Speaker number one has not shown, so we will begin with Speaker number two. And that's Leis Otzler. And she actually is speaking on behalf of a group, so she will have five minutes. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I want to bring you all back to a favorite memory of mine. Do you all remember that movie Miracle on 34th Street? The very end of that movie, the postmaster walks in with these big bags over his shoulder and brings them up to the judge. The point of the story is, there's a lot of people that believe, and that's what's happening here. You all received over 1,000 handwritten letters combined, with the exception, hopefully yours will be found, of our community members that believe. They believe in the Green Plus Plan, and they believe that it's the right fit for our community. I'm asking that you will pay attention to those voices. I'm here representing those voices. We also have 1,700 that have now grown from the last time we pulled our change.org petition, showing that we represent the Green Plus Plan. Tonight, you're going to hear from several Cabarrus County residents. You guys know, I think, what, are we up to like 42, 43, maybe 45 speakers? The majority of them are representing our group. We have a group of five members that will also be presenting to you tonight. These five members have been part of a small group of seven that have been working tirelessly over the past five months to come up with an alternate solution to what's being presented. We have not come once yet to complain. We have not come once yet yelling and screaming that we're unhappy with what's being presented. We've come from the very beginning with an alternate solution that we've put together, and we're asking that you look at it, at its entirety. We were hoping to do that tonight, but unfortunately, plans changed. The rules changed. So tonight, we're making lemonade. We're taking those lemons, and we're doing the best that we can. We've split it up into different sections where each of us will cover a specific topic that will help you become a believer, too. You're going to believe that this is the right plan based on the facts that we present tonight. Tonight, Catherine Samir, Lindsay Pam, and I will be focusing on facts. We are going to show you the facts of four major areas that the Green Plus Plan will cover and how far superior it is to the current IPT proposal. We are going to cover feeder patterns. We're going to cover utilization, both current and proposed, not just at Harris Road, but at the local middle schools that are impacted, at Winkler and Northwest. We're going to share information based on active communities being built that in the last meeting were misrepresented. We're going to cover information on transportation efficiencies and how those impact safety, safety of our children, safety of our buses, and cost of transportation. And finally, like I said, cost, cost versus benefits. How much cost are you willing to save or spend to take benefits away from our children, our children of the community, not just the Cox Mill community? We appreciate the time tonight and are asking that you fact-check, listen to the data, and open your mind to this presentation. Ask questions. Numbers don't lie. Let's go ahead and jump into feeder patterns. I'm going to go ahead and change this here, but before I do, I don't know that you can hear me. The data that we cover tonight is going to talk through the Cropper-Green Plus Plan review versus the IPT solution. We know based on the data that we have, we do still have a lot of unanswered questions that we were hoping to get answered between last Tuesday and tonight. But we know based on the data that we do have, the numbers for the Green Plus Plan are not accurate, so we're not sure what he's looking at. We're going to show you what we know tonight.
But let's talk feeder patterns.
This is what we talked about, what I talked about last time. You can see here, we've got broken feeder patterns. Over 500 students are in a broken feeder pattern. That means they're not in their home community school. They're going to a different school with different children. Am I up? That wasn't five minutes. That was three?
Yeah. I'm sorry, you didn't have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Why is it okay to keep 533 students in broken feeder patterns? Shouldn't we be using this middle school realignment to fix what we broke back in 2019 and 2020 to realign those students with the correct feeder patterns in high schools they're going to be going to? 913 students are going to be going to the wrong middle school if you select and vote for the IPT recommendation. How can you do that? How is that acceptable? That's more failure. These students are going to be like another Christmas movie that I like, which is Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. They're going to be students in the island of the misfit middle schoolers sitting in a classroom in a school where they don't belong. They're going to walk into a community that already exists, that's not their community. They're going to be there for a whole three years, and then they're going to leave and go back to another community. What type of environment and community are we presenting these kids with? As a parent, it breaks my heart. As a board member, it should be absolutely unacceptable. There's got to be a better solution in the Green Plus Plan. Puts all these kids in the right feeder pattern. It basically shifts them back into the right feeder pattern into their school. Why do feeder patterns matter? If you can think back to when you were in school and remember that kid that was there with you in kindergarten and was also there with you in high school at your graduation, you were in a positive feeder pattern experience. You probably know where that child lives. You probably know his parents, his siblings, what he likes and dislikes. That's special. That's what we have in our community, and that's what our kids deserve. Don't take it away and make it worse. Make it better. Change is inevitable. After the year we've just experienced, no one can argue that our children won't be more resilient than any single one of us standing in this room. But when that change is a negative impact that doesn't have to happen, again, it's unacceptable. You've got the power to make the decision. You've got the power to vote no against the Cropper IPT plan, and you can send them back to the drawing board to come up with a better solution or take the time to speak with us about Community Green Plus. And now I'm going to turn it over to Catherine, who's going to talk to you about utilization.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Catherine Parish. She has five minutes as well. So just for clarification, one is representing the plan and one is representing the actual subdivision.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight representing the affected Cox Mill Communities and IPT Plan to ask you to vote no against that plan for the reason that we believe our plan addresses utilization specifically at Harris Road better than the current options. We're aware this has been a big sticking point for the IPT, who has focused on and carefully communicated the magnitude of their initial utilization change. But realignment criteria call for a plan that also accounts for future growth, and that has not been addressed at all. Harris Road needs both immediate and long-term relief. As you can see in the graphic, together with additional data in your handout, the IPT's plan of moving more students out of Harris Road provides some immediate relief, but those gains are neutralized in the near future with the high rate of growth that will fill it right back up just as quickly. This is not a growth strategy. It's a quick win that focuses purely on numbers that look good on paper and does nothing to respect the 380 students' sacrifices you're asking them and their families to make. Looking at future growth projections taken from data on the Cropper GIS website, and more specifically, where that growth is coming from, you can understand why the Green Plan Plus removes the area north of 73 out of Harris Road. In addition to immediate relief for Harris Road and the correction of those students' feeder pattern, that area alone will account for 50% more growth in the next two years than all of the rest of the current Harris Road zone. Longer-term, growth rate remains significantly elevated, maintaining a 45% to 50% increase compared to the rest of the Harris Road area. Equally important is the knowledge that new residential development typically brings in families with younger school-age children. Certainly, that growth will have an immediate impact at the middle school level, but the elementary-aged and younger children accompanying them will continue to put a strain on Harris Road for many more years. Conversely, the Cox Mill area consists predominantly of more established communities with families whose children are aging out of school. Keeping this zone within Harris Road organically impacts long-term enrollment just by using average household age. average household-age demographics within those communities to Harris Road's advantage. We also want to be clear, we are not moving students in a high-growth area out of Harris Road just so another school can deal with them. Part of the Green Plan Plus from the beginning is to immediately create another one hundred seats of capacity at Northwest Cabarrus Middle to help accommodate the flood of growth that area is about to see. Green Plus is not about those who created it. We truly are trying to do what's best for all students in our area. And that approach has been solution-based, though our plan may have hit a few bumps in the way we've actively listened to that feedback and gone back to make our plan better. That's what led us to create our two-tiered approach for relief at Harris Road, moving some students now and future students later. With the majority of future growth centered around one small area in the current Harris Road zone, we are proposing that the three planning blocks encompassing those developments plus one more planning block immediately to their east be zoned to Winkler. This plan adheres to many realignment criteria, including impacting only seventeen current students with even fewer current students at the elementary level, being transportation-efficient because the distance from those communities to is shorter to Winkler than the IPT-impacted Cox Mill area, and it creates a contiguous zone for students. Additionally, these developments are currently all trees. Students won't populate these communities for three or more years, meaning the full impacts of even these decreased transportation costs won't happen for many years in the future. If we look beyond the numbers and how it impacts people, the immediate benefits are obvious. This move will impact future students, not current ones, meaning this plan will not break up feeder patterns. This allows our children to maintain current relationships and their sense of community, rather than disrupt their lives in favor of families that don't yet exist. These new families, in turn, won't have an attachment to a school, or to friends, or to a neighborhood. They will move in knowing what schools they will be assigned to and create those connections from scratch. For our schools, Green Plus means that Harris Road is provided with a balanced, long-term strategy that prevents future capacity from ever reaching as high as it does in the IPT recommendation. Not long from now, no one will remember these short-term gains, when Harris Road is again severely overburdened. With Green Plus, we can change that flow of water into the Harris Road cut from a heavy stream to a drip, and ensure that we provide enough time for the school to operate at a reasonable capacity until the new middle school arrives. Look at the data. It doesn't lie. Look at what we have presented. Look at what the IPT has not shown you, and we are sure that you will see, just as easily as we do, that Green Plus provides the most beneficial long-term solution for Harris Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samir Aurora.
Should I get started?
Yes.
My name is Samir Aurora. Good evening, Board. I'm here to give you another reason to not vote for IPT Plan by sharing with you number-based facts related to safety and transportation efficiency that prove that Green Plus Plan is better. This slide here shows comparison for the students moved by IPT and Green Plus Plans. Under IPT Plan, three hundred and eighty students from Highland Creek and Cox Mill area will be transported to Winkler. Average distance travel for them is going to be seven point eight seven miles. But as we have always said, it's not just the distance. The commute involves twelve traffic lights and a couple of traffic circles. The commute over I-85 will be through either Concord Mills Mall Parkway with average daily traffic of forty-five thousand vehicles, or Poplar Tent with daily traffic of thirty-two thousand five hundred vehicles. The statistics are from North Carolina Department of Transportation. Whereas, under Green Plus Plan, that transports two hundred and thirty-eight students north of Seventy-three to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, they will travel seven point zero seven average distance with merely five traffic lights, and with relatively half-average daily traffic of only sixteen thousand five hundred vehicles on Highway Seventy-three. This makes the commute of students under Green Plus Plan twice as safer as the IPT Plan. Next, let's look at the annual transportation cost, which was calculated based off numbers like school bus capacity, efficiency, diesel price, number of school days, from NCBusSafety.org website, and will have the same bearing on all the calculations, right? As seen in the chart, under IPT Plan, the cost to transport three hundred and eighty students to Winkler is nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, whereas, under Green Plus Plan, the cost to transport two hundred and thirty-eight students is only four thousand eight hundred dollars, offering immediate savings of forty-nine percent to the county. Note that students south of I-85 aren't taken into account as their travel to Northwest Cabarrus Middle under IPT, or to Winkler under Green Plus evens out, right? In the future, about three years from now, when the new planning block proposed by Green Plus will be functional, the projected hundred and fifty-six students will be traveling through a much safer route, through only eight traffic lights, and cumulative transportation cost savings, including current and future students, will be thirteen percent. So in conclusion, I, together with seventeen ninety-two change.org petition supporters, implore you to do the right thing by basing your decision on facts about Green Plus over its lack of representation in the Public Advisory Committee. Green Plus offers tangible benefits over IPT recommendation. It aligns broken middle school to high school feeder pattern for nine thirteen students, provides twice safer transportation for students, offers forty-nine percent transportation cost savings, as shared with you, addresses Harris Road Middle School utilization and future growth in a much better fashion. If you have any questions about the facts presented today, please feel free to reach out to me, or anyone in our group, or contact information along with this slide deck will be in your mailboxes tonight. Thanks again for your time and your public service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay Riley.
You can put that wherever you want it. Good evening.
Hello, again. I feel like we're all best friends now. Basically, I just wanted to show you another example, another reason to vote no on the IPT recommendation. As you can see from the slide that I put up here, there are so many negative implications that come with the IPT recommendation and many benefits with the Green Plus. As a group, you know, we've always tried to create a plan that has everyone's best interest, not just ours. Just want to take a second here and just say that I'm so disappointed in hearing all of the comments of people saying that our area is being selfish and privileged. As you can see, we were not provided any special accommodations, and we've had zero representation on this Public Advisory Committee, or even the slightest say in the secretive process from the beginning until we got to the board meetings. Basically, if you take a look at this slide, the IPT Plan, it may address immediate utilization, but that will increase in one to two years with active approved building. Everybody knows, everybody's trying to move up there. It does not address growth at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. It does not address the broken feeder patterns. It actually creates a new broken feeder pattern, which takes us out of Harris Road Middle School, and it forces our kids to attend an IB program without a transition plan, and it creates many other concerns, along with transportation inefficiencies. If you look at the Green Plus, it balances utilization, it plans for future growth, it adheres to the criteria that was set by you guys. It also fixes the broken feeder patterns, in which, you know, there have been some comments made on social media that we've been following with people north of Seventy-three, that they've actually expressed that that could be a positive impact for them. It really doesn't make sense to me why someone would not want their child to go to middle school with the same kids that they'll be attending high school with. I mean, who wants to stay in a broken feeder pattern? That's what we're here fighting to stay for. You know, we want our kids to go to the school with middle school, the same kids that they're going to be going to high school with. And basically, by fixing the broken feeder patterns, the other schools in the county can have the same sense of community that we have here at Harris Road Middle School, which, as you can see, we're all here, we're together, we've been sticking through this together. You know, it's taken a lot of time and energy, so. I'm here again, representing the fifteen hundred-plus people in the Highland Creek-Cox Mill neighborhoods. I implore you to listen to our concerns and take the information being presented tonight. Look at the maps, look at the numbers. Approving the IPT Plan, while so many in the community who must live with it and disagree is a huge mistake. Cropper's process was not transparent. I do not believe, or I do believe that open meeting laws were possibly violated. You, as a board, have the ability to do the right thing. Please find a better solution that works for everyone. As you can see, we have been able to come together despite a pandemic, and everything else this year has given us, and put together Green Plus. I know we can all work together to find a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Escobar.
Are we good?
You are good.
Okay. We have the best plan for all. That's what tonight is about. It's not about setting precedent or rehashing the last nine months. Look at the facts. You have a big vote coming up, and it may be delayed, but remember, we have given you plenty of reasons to vote no to the IPT recommendation, because we are looking at the entire county school district, just like you are. Our plan follows the district's criteria. By voting no, you can address utilization for Harris Road and for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Address future utilization now, not in two more years, and you can avoid rezoning over and over again. Green Plus offers a benefit to every child impacted. We are the same five speakers who spoke at our first school board meeting in January. We have been requesting to speak with you and observe the Public Advisory Committee and the internal planning team meetings. This has been a closed process. A lawyer last week told you, you, as a board, could set this up however you would like. You are in charge. You know who's not in charge? The acting superintendent. He's the one who told you to be careful of the precedent you are setting by having us present our plan, even though you all agreed that that's what you wanted to hear tonight. The school district's current realignment precedent set by Mr. Cropper and Mr. Schultz is to shut realignment families out of the process. I am confident that the law is on our side when we say that the PAC meetings should have been open to the public. Advisory boards are required to have open meetings. You were disturbed last week when we shared that we had no representation on that committee, and that committee members who are required to be objective looked out for their own neighborhoods. Are you disturbed to know that we requested access to those meetings and we were denied? When we shared the open meetings law, we were still denied. The precedent we are trying to set, learn what the school board is doing. Get involved, and be an example to your kids that those who provide solutions in this world are better than complainers. We have given you multiple reasons to vote no to the IPT recommendation. You've seen the scores comparing the plans. You've driven the routes. Tonight, we're asking you to look at utilizations, look at the current broken feeder patterns, and recognize the cost the IPT recommendation would have on the entire district. We still have unanswered questions. We asked for data for months, and this week, we asked even more questions and still haven't gotten them. You have the ability to correct this process and listen to the parents who have provided solutions. I don't know what will be said after we are done speaking tonight. Do the right thing. We've been saying that since January. Look at all these media reports, and tonight, we are making one final pitch, not because you changed an existing precedent, it's because it is our right. We are speaking during the public comment period of your working meeting. My daughter's going to be speaking tonight, and when you hear her, don't think she can't handle change. Think, wow, she gets it. It's my right to speak. I should be a problem solver. An elected official should listen to me. You can be her hero. You can listen to her. Look at the facts, look at the numbers, and look at what Cropper hasn't shared with you and with us, and comfortably vote no on the IPT recommendation.
Our next speaker is Brian Patterson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again. I came and spoke to you guys last week in regards to the Green Plus Plan. Just as a reminder, thank you again for your service. Went home and told my family how happy I was to express to you guys that my dad hadn't volunteered on the board for years, so, again, we appreciate that. As a living, again, I'm a risk manager. I work for an insurance company that does, handles lots of large school districts, including Cumberland County Schools, that has over fifty-one thousand students and over eighty-seven school buildings. I looked at this from the perspective of insurance, and what I looked up today told me that Insurance Services Office calculates auto liability and physical damage premiums on vehicles that school districts operate under normal commercial property policies, and does that using mileage. So one of the things I'd like to be, to bring up, and I don't know that we have the parameters of the number of miles that the buses are going to travel on a daily basis, but there's delineation between fifty miles, fifty-one to two hundred, and then more than two hundred in a given period of time. So I'd love to have an opportunity to speak to you guys further about how that's going to impact liability premiums and safety with the buses being on the road. Generally speaking, vehicles that travel long distances have a greater risk of accidents than those that travel shorter distances, so that kind of makes sense. I'd like to look into the TIMS data. Did some research with the legacy TIMS data that Cabarrus County has submitted to the state, and I wasn't able to get commute times for 2019 to 2020 because those are being curtailed because of the COVID pandemic, but it indicated that average ride times in Cabarrus County were pretty much right in line with the state, if not lower. And I'd hate to see, you know, the move for the Green Plus Plan or any other plans to kind of make those commute times longer. Primary and secondary traffic routes, continuity plans for severe traffic or inclement weather, the time of normal expectations of operation to include pickup and drop-off times for all the services that are going to affect the impacted areas. We sought cooperation to get this information from the board, and we'd still like to have an opportunity to look at those commute times and the planned travel routes to see if those are the safest and most efficient routes that are available. We would like to present those pieces of the Green Plus Plan to the board and have the ability to discuss it a little bit further in detail, but we're going to take what we can get and give you three minutes at a time, so everybody's doing a little bit of a piece of it. Average ride times and average commute distances are perfect-world estimates, which are calculated without current traffic flows and are not representative of actual conditions that are in place right now, especially with the pandemic easing and people getting back to a normal commute. I'd like to understand how Cabarrus County schools went as being recognized as an efficiency leader in two thousand nine, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, to being, considering a plan that makes travel so much further for middle school students and makes them spend so much more time on a bus, which may not be the safest option for them, excuse me. Again, traffic concerns are mainly my contingency plan. I'd like to see if we can have an opportunity to see if we can get more details about the perceived plans of travel and proceed from there.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much for your opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Sung.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you again in regards to the middle school rezoning. As evidenced by over seventeen hundred signatures and nearly a thousand handwritten letters, the Green Plus Plan has large community support. Our plan scores within six points of Cropper's for the whole of the county, demonstrating how much merit our plan has. Five of those six points were for demographics, which were weighted twice as heavily as any of the other rezoning criteria. The rezoning criteria is being violated for twenty-five percent of the county you represent. The Green Plus Plan is on par with Cropper's plan for utilization, as evidenced by his own scoring system. That includes HRMS, and our plan is actually lower than the proposed plan in the long term. Crossing natural boundaries is violated. Our children will have to cross I-85 no matter which way they travel. The Green Plus Plan does not have any child in a county crossing I-85. Transportation efficiency is violated. We'll have to either travel along the Mall Road or along Poplar Tent Road, a road that's already so congested, there's a widening plan starting in 2024. This is projected to last twelve years until 2038, so we're crossing natural boundaries along the busiest roads in the county while contending with a twelve-year construction project, and that is an accident waiting to happen. Proximity is violated. The average distance traveled for Cropper's plan is three point eight miles, but for our students, that's eight miles. The low estimate shows our students will be traveling an additional fourteen hundred and forty miles per year than the average student. So our students' commute will double, their travel time will triple. The Green Plus Plan does not expect twenty-five percent of students to take on that burden. Feeder patterns are violated. We moved here five years ago, and we opted into the Mandarin Immersion Program so that my child could learn to speak to his grandparents in their native language. So now, not only will his feeder pattern be broken, but we'll have to choose between sending him either farther away to a language academy, or introducing him to an IB program that does not have a viable option to opt out of. The Green Plus Plan aligns current middle school to high school feeder patterns for nine hundred more students than Cropper's plan upfront. Unlike his plan, we try to avoid the need for his sixty thousand dollar consulting fee in the future. You said last week that we need to have a positive attitude about this because change is imminent and our children are model after our behavior. Like so many others, I have smiled my way through a pandemic for the people I serve and for my child's benefit. What I won't do is smile through a process that's violating five out of six criteria for twenty-five percent of the county. Our feeder patterns matter. Our natural boundaries matter. Our proximity matters. Our double distance and triple commute times matter. Our safety matters. We are not expendable to meet utilization alone. My child is not a number that can be moved out of convenience for others. Our children are not a commodity to be traded for poor planning. We have a viable alternative- We have a viable alternative in the Green Plus Plan. I ask of you, please ask questions. Please critically examine the information Cropper has been feeding all of us. Please take the time to consider the Green Plus Plan, and please model to our children that the 25% are worth fighting for, just as much as the 75% that currently benefit from the IPT recommendation. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deanna Roach.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Board members, for another opportunity to address this very important issue. I spoke last week, and I wanted to remind you that I am a resident of the Highland Creek Community, but I'm not directly impacted by the rezoning. My children have made the cutoff for 2022. However, I do come before you on behalf of the 380 students that, in my opinion, will serve as sacrificial lambs if you do not vote on the Green Plus Plan. Today, I implore the board to consider the following. The Internal Planning Team's plan creates broken feeder patterns for approximately 380 students. The Green Plus Plan provides a benefit of better feeding patterns across three different schools for over 900 students. The plan also has a two-tier utilization approach for Harris Road by moving students north of 73 now and moving a small block of students from newer developments later, which keeps Harris Road utilization numbers lower than the Internal Planning Team's long-term plan. The Green Plus transportation efficiencies and safety considerations also offer fewer students with an increased commute and a commute that makes sense with travel by less busy roads. I ask the board not to rush this decision. I implore the entire board to review the presentation at length to avoid a premature or rushed decision. Don't make 380 students sacrificial lambs. The Green Plus Plan obviously has merit based on a similar score to the IPT's recommendation, and all of the points are addressed in detail in the presentation. This plan has been around for more than four months, and unfortunately, we still cannot say the entire board has had an opportunity to review it at length with a question-answer session from our community leads. Green Plus is a better tactical solution while future growth is addressed that offers benefits to all students currently under review, not solely the group that created Green Plus. There are benefits in the plan for capacity at Northwest Cabarrus and feeder pattern improvements at Northwest and Winkler. The build-out of the next new middle school is at least 10 years away. Today, we have an opportunity to address broken feeder patterns, preemptively provide relief to Northwest, and keep long-term utilization at Harris Road reasonably controlled. If you vote against the Green Plus Plan, you will not have the opportunity to address these issues for over a decade. Please do not let today serve as merely a perfunctory meeting with preconceived notions. Vote people over numbers. Please vote community. Vote positive adolescent development through maintaining healthy social ties. Vote where it makes sense. Vote Green Plus, or at the very least postpone the vote until the entire board has had an opportunity to review the presentation with our community leads. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Alexander.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak here today, to advocate for our children, and I'm asking you to vote green. I think we all can agree this last year has been nothing short of the worst-case scenario for you, for our school's administration, our teachers, and all of our children. Our kids are already experiencing depression, anxiety, and social insecurities. Our children have been in a social and emotional crisis for more than a year. They've experienced emotional and social trauma. They eagerly anticipate normalcy. They crave it. They need it. NBC News reports a 24% increase in mental health-related issues in our children across the nation. Do you really want to add to their stress by removing them from their social and emotional safety net for three years, only to turn around and send them back to their elementary peers? These kids are only just beginning to find out who they are. By uprooting them, you're going to cause even more undue stress. When I think back to middle school, I was already on my seventh and eighth school. I started in one school and moved again after six weeks. It took me a good year to acclimate to my environment. I was so depressed and had so much anxiety, I didn't want to make an effort in school or relationships. I struggled so much in cultivating relationships and finding a real connection. By the end of eighth grade, I finally had my network. I had a community. I was doing well in school. I was happy. Two weeks after I started high school, it happened again. We moved, only this time, we moved here to North Carolina. We moved to a neighborhood where my street went to the high school in the neighboring town, and the neighbors that I shared my fence with went to a high school in the town that we actually lived in. My neighbors were the ones I saw after school, on weekends, at the pool, around our neighborhood, but they were not of my school peers. It didn't make sense then, and it doesn't make sense now, to take kids who live right down the street from one school and move them away to another school more than twice the distance. I'm asking you here today to please take in account the emotional and social consequences you'll be inflicting on our kids who have lost enough, but who have held on to hope that they get to be with their community. Please don't yo-yo their education. Please vote green so they can continue forging these networks and relationships that are so very vital to their academic, social, emotional wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hema Koneni.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys again today. I'm here to support the Green Plus Plan and oppose the Cropper recommended IPT plan. I will tell you why. IPT recommended plan may sound as a perfect Band-Aid to address immediate need to reduce Harris Road middle utilization, but we will be back again in this room 120 years down the road, talking about another realignment, just again, to do with utilization. I oppose the IPT recommended plan because it does not address growth at North Cabarrus Middle School. It does not address current broken feeder patterns. It creates transportation inefficiencies and safety concerns. I support the Green Plus Plan because it balances current utilizations for future growth. You have seen our presenters present facts and data, fixes broker feeder patterns done by previous realignments. Again, facts were presented, keeps our kids with their peers, and maintains friendships during the most challenging developmental period, and it addresses transportation efficiency and safety. No kid has to cross I-85. The truth of the matter is Cabarrus County is constantly growing, and school infrastructure has to grow at the same rate as neighborhood developments. Moving existing students to faraway schools to make way for new neighborhoods is not an option. Why are we targeting a community that is invested in these specific schools due to proximity and in keeping their kids around the social circle they grew up with? Why are you not looking at rezoning new developments? I sincerely request the board to not become victims of rationalization that Cropper is giving you and blindly support what Cropper has recommended. Do you compare with the Green Plus Plan? Do you have more questions on our plan? I'm sure you do. Ask, validate. Do not simply assume IPT recommended plan is better. We elected you to represent us. Give us the confidence that you are listening to us and have analyzed all the data before making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
You may begin.
Would you like me to state my name like previous? I'm sorry, I haven't been listening to...
You can. I've just stated it before you entered.
Hi, I'm Christina Moore. I'm from Kristenberry Woods. I've had the opportunity to come to speak to each of you before. My apologies, I was not able to come the last two times. I mentioned that I'm in the military. Sometimes that pulls me away a little bit. But I did want to kind of follow up because I did listen to the video presentation, especially of the last meeting, and address some points that were brought up then, reinforce some of the points that are brought up the first night, but also kind of talk about some of the things that maybe you're not aware of in regards to how we're being approached as far as the Kristenberry community, and I think the messaging that's coming out, and I believe in really addressing messaging directly. So, sorry, I'm out of breath. I had to run for my car. But one of the things that I brought up in the first night was, you know, I'm one of those children that ended up getting bussed from one school to another when I grew up, and I believe Ms. Grimsley, I believe several of you had mentioned you had seen that and really gone through that yourself when you were growing up, and even potentially had that happen with your children. And I just want to highlight that although it's been done in the past, it doesn't mean that it's right to do it now. And the Green Plus Plan really does address the transportation concerns. Ms. Carpenter, I know you had some concerns about some of the traffic patterns and some of the risks. Those are our same concerns, the safety of our children. And so, I think that even though that we've done that in the past, and I know diversity was one of the high points of the IPT plan, you know, there's other ways for us to get increased diversity in schools than busing and doing that to our children that are currently here enrolled in the schools. The other point that I wanted to address is specifically some of the commentary that's being made that this is a neighborhood of elitist, of rich people, of individuals that are really trying to pressure and dominate and change the dynamic of our school system. That's not why we're here. That's not why we brought our children here. That's not why we asked them to have a voice in their school system. That's not why my children have been out there campaigning, and I know that most of you have seen them during campaign times, for members of the school board. We've asked them, and we've asked ourselves as parents, what do we need to do for what's best for our children? And what's best for our children is what's in the Green Plus Plan. We've identified options. We didn't come to you with problems without recommended solutions. I think that's a great role model for our children. Don't just bring up problems. Identify solutions. We've come up with a viable solution. If you don't like the solution, we can make adjustments, but we've got to be considerate of our children, what's best for them, and the children that are here, not the children that are potentially here in the future. We cannot plan for future development to the detriment of our children that are here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Carr.
There's your time. And then the flights will tell you what to do. Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, I'm Andrea Carr. I'm here to oppose the IPT plan and ask the board to vote against accepting this plan. I am here in support of the Green Plus Plan. I'm here as a new face for you to see, just one of the thousand other faces that you have not yet seen, but are behind the handwritten notes, the numerous emails you've received, the comments provided in survey after survey from my friends, neighbors, from the communities that elected you and who have listened to your ask and criteria and are providing you an option that addresses all of the elements you are looking to achieve, while focused on future challenges we've anticipated. This is the Green Plus Plan. I'm here to ask you to consider what an amazing precedent it would set that a community and a group of elected officials for that community work together. Let that sink in, together, to design a plan that met the needs of the most people possible within that community, with a consideration for how daily life would be affected, shorter and safer commutes, friendships through stable feeder patterns, educational programs that were consistent while being mindful to bring down utilization, numbers now and in the future, not just with our own interests in mind, but with the lens of a broader group of children affected, things only those of us who live and love Cabarrus County could do, not a paid consultant from five days away. I ask you hear me and my neighbors today. You've continued to have us here to speak, but I think today, you need to truly challenge yourselves to hear us. We are a group of parents and neighbors with all sorts of circumstances. We are not any better fit to handle an adverse decision on this realignment. We did not have a voice in your committee, where it seems maybe we would have been heard earlier. So, now, we come in front of you, giving you the best possible option that benefits not only our neighborhood, but as many children as possible in Cabarrus. So, as few people have to deal with that outcome that's not ideal, we care about our community because we live here. As my daughter got up into her speech on Ruby Bridges a few weeks ago to her fifth-grade AIG class, she shared what a historic place Ruby had in defining our school systems. I have to say how proud I am of my community for doing their part, bringing facts, educated options that meet and exceed your criteria, perseverance, and a local perspective to hopefully make this small point in our local history the best it could be. We can do better than the IPT plan, and I have to believe you know it, if you will only hear us. I'm here in support of the Green Plus Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to ask that you state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Rohit Walia.
Thank you, and you may begin.
So, I'm a father of two children who will be impacted by this CCS realignment, so I'm here today to convey my support for the Green Plus Plan. Let me begin with a quote today from one of our famous writers, who has said, "Do not compromise yourself. You are all you have got." The Green Plus Plan that has been presented to this esteemed board after an extensive research and data-driven exercise is the plan that I'm here to support. It has been drafted with an open mindset to allow equitable utilization distribution across all schools. This plan provides practical pathways to minimize student impact on all realignment criterias. I said this last time when I was here and want to state this again tonight, that this plan is not about a particular neighborhood or community, but rather, it's a holistic solution that has some benefits for all impacted communities. If you drill into the plan, you will notice that it addresses long-term population growth by developing alternate creative solutions for HRMS and also accounts for future capacity issues. It has at least one benefit for each impacted child, be it shorter commute time, improved feeder pattern, a new school, to name a few. It has capacity alleviation for Northwest Cabarrus, along with feeder pattern improvements at Northwest and Winkler. Given the proposed IPT plan, we see violation of realignment criterias for more than 25% of the impacted students, clearly indicating that IPT plan is not a balanced plan overall. The Green Plus Plan keeps the alignment zones within the natural boundaries and reduces number of school buses passing through congested roads across I-85. So, at this point, I urge and request the board to carefully review the Green Plus Plan. Please do not rush into this decision. It may seem late in the game for some, but this game has been, but this plan has been around for four months. Let's work together on this. This is an opportunity we all cannot miss. And to end, I would say, as Charles Schwab once said, "The best place to succeed is where you are with what you have." You all have the Green Plus Plan at your disposal. We want the best for all the children, so let's handle this the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wei Sung.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Dr. Wei Sung. I'm assistant professor at UNC Charlotte. I teach statistics for Bioinformatics, which is a graduate-level course in statistics, and I have expertise in statistical analysis. Under IPT, my child will be traveling 9.4 miles to Winkler across I-85 or 11 miles to Roberta Road to continue the Mandarin program. I watched the recent board meeting on April 13th and see that the major scoring difference in the two plans comes from demographic points in the middle school realignment. I wanted to take a closer look at the evaluation metrics used by Cropper, as I was just as confused as the board members. After closely analyzing the data, I find some... After closely analyzing the data, I find some major issues. Next page. First of all, outside of statistical handout on 1/20/20, none of the demographic tables show any scoring, only percentages. This information should be made transparent. The reason this is a problem is there are calculation errors in the demographic tables. The other column, the other column is incorrectly subtracted from the Hispanic total in this table, raising serious doubts about the statistical accuracy and scoring in this analysis. Looking at the data again, there's a double counting fallacy. Take the example of Mal Pleasant. In this example, the school is penalized for having too many white students, and then again penalizing, penalized for having too few non-white students. This is known as a double counting fallacy inflating demographic scores. Next page. Now, if we look at the evaluation, evaluation metrics overall, we can see the weighting of each metric with respect to the total score. You can see that the weighting of demographics is nearly 60% of the total score. Evaluation metrics are extremely unbalanced. For example, you're weighing demographics 30 times more than travel distance. This is ridiculous. Travel distance should be by far the number one criteria here. Next page. Now, if we look at travel distance weighting, we have some issues here as well. When we look at the average student transportation distance score, these are unaffected students. The distance to their school should not change. Why is this weighted as much as impacted, impacted students with only a 0.01 mile change? This does not make any sense. Again, if we look at average impacted student transportation score, a difference of .16 miles per student or .35 miles per student only gets a score of one versus two. Basically, what Cropper is doing is severely underweighting miles traveled per student, not to mention ignoring the type of road traveled. Next page. I want to highlight some of the comments made last Thursday regarding the realignment. Members of the board felt uncomfortable on the length of the bus ride, the turns, and the danger of the trip. This is a major concern and underweighted or ignored in the evaluation criteria. Members of the board felt uncomfortable about moving the Mandarin program again and all the way to Roberta Road. This is a major concern and not even part of the evaluation criteria. Members of the board were confused about the demographics metrics, which are not transparent and severely overweighted with regards to other evaluation criteria. One member of the board said he was up here and had to go through the exact same process, and that he hoped this would lead to more future board members. What I would say to this member is, I'm sorry that you had to go through this, and that you felt the need to be on the school board to prevent future realignments from affecting your community. You should not have to be on the school board to protect your children, community, from having to travel unsafe distances, totally disrupting their school trajectory. Parents like me and you should be protected by the school board, not bullied by them. We have no voice on this committee, so please imagine yourself in our shoes. Would you want your kids to be bused across a dangerous highway, have a long-term education program interrupted due to distance? The Cropper plan is a generic plan for rezoning that has underlying biases, statistical inaccuracies, and does not fit our community needs. I urge the board to vote no on the IPT plan, and urge the board to seriously consider the Green Plus Plan. Finally, I'm happy to redo Cropper's analysis for half the price, if that's so, if the board so desires.
Thank you.
My contact information is on the back if you have any additional questions.
Good evening. I'm going to ask that you state your name, please.
Yes, I'm Rebati.
You may begin.
So hello, everyone. Good evening, and thank you for providing the opportunity to speak on behalf of our kids. So I live in the Highland Creek area, and I have two kids. Both my husband and I work currently, because the Highland Creek is very close from, I mean, the Cox Mill School is very close from our neighborhood. So we, we are okay to really drop the kids and let them participate in the after-school activities, even drop them early, or if at all they missed the school, school bus, we are okay to drop them. And, and still, I don't miss my work. I don't miss going to work. So I could do all of that because it's, it's near, and I could really sign up for more activities, even I volunteer sometimes at the school. That's all just possible because that, the, the school is, is close to my home, and I could still manage, don't miss my work, I don't have to ask for permission. Now, if the school is really changed to Winkler, I could not imagine how much it affects that pick-up and drop time. I cannot let my kids participate in any school clubs, because it's definitely more commitment from my side and my husband's side. And if at all they missed the school bus, then I could not imagine crossing the Concord Mills area and dropping them at school and still being on time for my meetings. So as you can see, number of people represented. We are not here to just show up our problems. We are here to really propose an alternative solution, like the Green Plus Plan. And you can see that it offers a number of benefits, like the transportation-wise, safety-wise, it's definitely going to help, and no kid has to cross I-85. It, it's still like, the HRMS is close to us. And also, it's a balanced solution and meets the more alignment criteria. And I would see like how, how much the representation is for the Green Plus Plan, and I would really appreciate if you could consider that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Our next speaker is Susan Everett.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Everett, and I'm here today to ask you to vote no on the IPT program and to please consider the Green Plus Program. I'm a face you haven't seen before. I don't have a bunch of things written down. I'm here because this is really important to me and to my children. And I decided, kind of at the last minute, to come and speak. My daughter is in third grade, and my son is in fourth grade. My son will be starting middle school at the fall of 2022. I'm concerned about the proposed rezoning of the middle school because of a lot of reasons, one of which is the social and emotional impact of our children who are leaving their peer group to go to a new peer group, and then will again have to leave a peer group in three years to go to another peer group. My son is very active in recreational sports, and wants to be active in middle school sports, and then also in high school sports. So this is something that worries me immensely, you know, that he's going to be ripped away from one group, put into a new group, and then ripped away from that group, and yet put into another group. I'm also concerned about the distance that my kids will have to travel. I currently take them to school, however, and pick them up, however, I don't know that I would logistically be able to do that for both an elementary school and a middle schooler when, and if this were to happen. So the other thing is, I'm worried about the impact of any type of before-school activities that could be impacted on me having to have one at an elementary school and the other at the middle school. So again, I just ask you to take a look at the Green Plus Program or Plan, because I feel like it addresses all of these issues. I feel like it also address, not only addresses feeder patterns and safety, but also addresses, addresses the increase of students in the affected schools, and can be a good alternative to the IPT program, or Plan, sorry. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa White.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you for the chance to speak with you tonight.
Ms. White, I'm sorry, could you speak to that? There you go, perfect.
Take two. Good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak with you tonight. Less than a week ago, I stood here and shared concerns with you on how this rezoning will affect my family, primarily due to doubling the distance to get to school and tripling the commute time. Tonight, I would like to specifically address why these issues are not simply inconvenient or frustrating, but why this poses safety issues for our children. This IPT rezoning plan completely changes the type of commute our children will have. For example, to get from the Highland Creek neighborhood to Winkler Middle School, a bus will have to cross over Interstate 85 and navigate a congested, major thoroughfare at the two busiest times of day, morning and evening rush hour. Not only will that be a longer and more taxing commute for our kids, it increases the chances of accidents or other potential safety issues. The bus drivers will have an even greater responsibility to manage the commute and potential safety issues while dealing with these high-traffic areas. How can a bus driver be expected to also keep an eye on a bus full of middle school children? This change clearly poses more than just a concern for the physical safety of making it to and from school safely. Additionally, won't this increased commute also present a strain on our county resources? How can the same buses be used for elementary, middle school, and high school if the commute has been doubled for 380 students? Please let me stress again, the Green Plus Plan proposes less students affected by an increased commute, and the students that would be affected in the Green Plus Plan would be traveling significantly less busy roads. The Green Plus Plan presents solutions for multiple communities, not just mine. It presents a longer-term solution to overutilization at Harris Road. It holds merit. Look at the scores. It makes more sense. The Green Plus Plan is just now receiving the attention and discussion it deserves. The IPT-recommended plan is not the appropriate solution for Harris Road's overutilization problems. Please do not rush this decision. Listen to your constituents. Cumulatively, you received over 1,000 letters from your constituents supporting the Green Plus Plan. Almost 800 surveys were completed rejecting the plan. You have 1,700 signatures on a petition rejecting the plan. Please do not rush this decision. Listen to your constituents. Please vote Green Plus Plan. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Dawson, you just start talking. Good evening.
Good evening, board. How are you all?
If you will, state your name, please.
My name is Vijay Apani.
Thank you.
I live in Allen Mills community, right next to Cox Mill Elementary School and High School. I have two daughters. One goes to Harris Middle, and one goes to Cox Mill Elementary. Now, I'm here to back up this excellent presentation put in by board members, some of the, some of my community members, the Green Plus Plan. I want to back it up, I want to support that full plan, and I want you to look, look into that plan completely and understand, you know, the Cropper plan is good, but this is much better. Right, you know, what we have to do, what is better for the kids, and we have to help the kids, we have to help them save the time, we have to help them provide a better, better education. We, we are here to help the kids grow in a right direction. Do not change the way they are reading, do not change the way their methodology completely. Right now, you know, I think my, my kid was supposed to, you know, if this plan goes through, my kid will end up going to Winkler School. That is IB-based, and then they have to come back to Cox Mill High School, which is in a different curriculum, right? That doesn't help them in any way, you know? Adjustment, and the new friends, and the new location, new style of curriculum would be very, very painful for the kids. Now, I'm here to talk about a couple of things, you know, which have been spoken a lot the last one hour, two hours by my friends. One is the distance, right? You know, a lot of people don't understand the impact of the distance. I moved from New Jersey to here just to save the commute time, right? Now, coming here, I escape the commute time, but I'm, I'm doing the same thing for the kids. They're going about two miles right now, they'll end up going to 10 miles. And, you know, the time, the time they spend in the, you know, early in the morning and the evening, that is essential. That is the time what we can give to the, as a parent to the kids, as a teacher to the kids, to read up, to catch up anything they want to do. They want to have a nice breakfast, they don't want to rush to the breakfast, they don't want to go to school with a, you know, different mood. We should give them ample opportunity to, you know, do whatever they're supposed to do in the mornings or in the evenings, right? And, you know, the, the proposed plan, IP, IP, plan, whatever, IPT plan, if it goes through, you know, it's going to double the distance because of commute time. Commute time, time is essential. We can give everything to the kids, time and education. We are here to provide both of them, and, you know, we've got to do the right thing for the kids. We, we have to help them each and every, whichever way, whatever is possible. Once they lose the time, they can never, they can never get back. Now, I, I saved a lot of time coming here, and from New Jersey to here, and I want to provide the best thing for my kids. I implore you to consider this Green Plus Plan, whatever is put in by, and please take the decision appropriately, help the kids, and help the community. Thank you. Thank you, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll state your name, please.
I'm sorry?
If you'll state your name, please.
My name is Dilip Shetty. Good evening to you and members of the board. Thanks for this opportunity to speak before you. I'm a parent and homeowner living at the Allen Mills neighborhood. I'm here to request you to give a fair consideration and subsequently approval to the Green Plus Plan. It has already been highlighted by my friends that this Green Plus Plan is the best balanced solution for all, considering school utilization, future growth, proximity, transportation efficiency, feeder patterns, and natural boundaries. One thing we might not have noticed earlier in this context is the flooding of the Cox Mill Road in case of heavy rains. So while this realignment to Winkler Middle School almost doubles the commute time for the kids in Allen Mills and nearby neighborhoods, in case of a flash flooding, the ride back home for the kids can become much longer than double. Also, I'd like to stress on the importance of the continuity of friendship ties. From my personal childhood experience, you know, when I was growing up back in India, my father was in a transferable job, and we had to change cities and schools every two to four years. So I never had friends who lasted more than two to four years, and I feel that that has had a, you know, lasting negative impact on my life and personality. While I have made, you know, friends, but my friendship is never so deep-rooted as it could have been if I were at, you know, a same place. This may not be the same, exact same case for these kids, but I think we should do whatever we can to avoid, you know, disrupting their friendship ties too often. Yeah, and one more thing is, most of us in Allen Mills and other nearby neighborhoods, we have just moved our kids from other elementary school to here, and so it will be a frequent disruption of their, you know, friendship bonds. I think the Green Plus Plan helps avoid this by maintaining the feeder pattern for maximum number of students. Once again, I would request you to give a fair consideration to this plan, and vote for this plan, and let us know if, if you have any questions, or if you see any flaws in this plan, let us, let the group know who are representing this plan. So thanks so much for this opportunity.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll state your name, please. Sorry? Will you state your name, please?
Okay. My name is Krishna. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak about the alignment. I live in Highland Creek. I have two kids. One is in Cox, one is going to Cox Mill Elementary, and the other one is in Harris Road Middle School. Right now, when my, my son is, goes to, he is in the, sorry, he's enrolled in the clubs, in the Harris Road Middle School. But because now the Harris Road Middle School is very close to Highland Creek, I'm able to manage my, both my kids, because I can send my daughter to the bus, then later I can start to go to Harris Road Middle School, and I can drop my son. But if you change the school now from Harris Road to Winkler, which is, it will take approximately 30 to 45 minutes, I had to sacrifice either my daughter goes to school or my son clubs. So this is one, one of the situation what I am facing right now, and similarly, there are other parents also facing the same situation, because that is why I'm opposing the proposed IPT plan, and, and I'm supporting the Green Plus Plan, which will benefit to all parents, including kids, towards the transportation and even, sorry, even, yeah, but better, they can concentrate more even on the education also, if, if they, if it is very less distance. Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Sandy Maltini.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Maltini. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My neighborhood Highland Creek finds itself in a tremendously sad irony as our middle schools are rezoned. Highland Creek is one of the neighborhoods that Harris Road Middle School was built to support. Highland Creek was part of the new development that justified the opening of schools in our part of the county. We've been here as each of our schools opened, and we've poured our hearts and talents into these schools. I am one of many Highland Creek residents who have spent countless hours giving back to our community by volunteering at our schools, including Harris Road, where I'm currently on the PTSO Board. At this point, we have amazing schools where unfortunately growth has exceeded capacity. But Highland Creek is not a growth community. Highland Creek has been fully developed for over ten years, which means that within a small margin, it is known how many Highland Creek students can be expected to attend our schools. We are not a surprise. Therefore, it's unfathomable to me and my neighbors that we may find ourselves rezoned to another school outside of our community. I support the Green Plus Plan, and I specifically find one component of the Green Plus Plan particularly innovative. The Green Plus Plan calls for some new developments being built in school zones where the schools are already at or over capacity to be zoned to the closest school offering space. This concept has been successfully used in other areas. It permits students already in the neighborhood school to stay in their school and places choice in the hands of prospective home buyers. New home buyers will likely buy homes at a slower rate in parts of the county where overcrowded schools, and they may have to choose to buy a home, or they may even choose to buy a home in a school zone where space is available, such as Winkler West Cabarrus. I feel that if developers know that we are not going to bow to them, they may even choose to put new homes in these areas, which could be a huge positive for Cabarrus County. We clearly have space for more students in certain schools and need slow enrollment in other schools. No plan being proposed other than Green Plus addresses this. This idea is not new. I've read the rezoning facts page and understand the concerns about creating satellites and negatively impacting transportation. But I also know that most of the new development in our area is no greater distance from Winkler than Highland Creek. And the mention of new development accounting for such a small number of students absolutely makes my brain explode, since the small amount of new development could literally displace Highland Creek from its neighborhood schools. Let's set a new precedent that can address future growth. The blue and yellow plans, as proposed by the out-of-town consulting firm, do not incorporate any ideas that encourage voluntary enrollment in the schools with space and moderate enrollment at overcapacity schools. There's no quick fix, but shuffling our students is no answer. The West Cabarrus Schools will face the same issues that Harris Road, Cox Mill, and Harrisburg Hickory Ridge currently face. New ideas should be considered. Please consider Green Plus.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandy Salazar. Thank you. If you could go right there. You may begin.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I live in the Allen Mills Community in West Cabarrus County, and tonight I'm here to officially voice my disapproval for the proposed IPT Plan for the middle school rezoning. I'm sure by now that we sound like a broken record, but this plan is flawed. It increases commute times, it breaks our feeder patterns, and it bounces our kids in and out of IB programs. This will make my family's commute increase from three point two miles to eight point one miles. While this may be average according to Cropper, there is nothing average about the traffic in the area our kids will be traveling. By car, our time to get to our kids' middle school will increase almost four times. We live in this community, and we know the routes and the travel times. Your road surveys during a pandemic and bus tours during spring break may justify the plans on paper, but we all know that they are inaccurate and quite frankly worthless. There simply will not be enough time to be involved, students and parents, with such a commute at hand. I would like to remind you all how much opposition you have gotten from this plan. In the most recent community survey, there was overwhelmingly negative feedback. The blue plan, sixty-five percent disapproval; yellow, a whopping ninety-eight percent disapproval. On the survey results, Cropper indicates that Cox Mill families were expected to be vocal and contributes that to the poor ratings. Of course, we will be vocal. The plans uproot our children. However, if that were the case, then where were all of the other members of the community who would be benefiting from the plan, taking the survey and voting with overwhelming approval? Where are they on evenings like this to speak their support? They aren't, because this plan does not benefit the community. Can I respectfully remind each and every one of you that your job that you signed up for is to represent us? You are elected and hired to listen to the collective voices of the people you were chosen to represent. How in good faith could you consider to vote for this IPT proposal when you have over two-thirds of the survey results disapproving it, when every single speaker up here night after night, with the exception of one, is here to speak against it? Not to mention seventeen hundred votes on a change.org petition and over a thousand handwritten letters delivered to you personally? If you move forward this recommendation, which does not even meet your own standards, you are failing to do your job of representing us. You will be failing our kids, and you will be failing our communities. I am not unrealistic and naive. I know change must happen. I could understand if this was the best possible option we could come up with, but it is not. The community Green Plus Plan meets the criteria better than the expensive consultant plan our taxpayer money hired. Additionally, it rates the same. I would ask how you could even consider to vote on something that brings harmful impacts to over a fourth of the families involved without even exploring an option that doesn't? The Green Plus Plan has merit and it benefits families all across the county. If you continue to go forward and consider the IPT recommendation without even considering the Green Plus Plan, once again, you would be failing at your job. Please, I ask you, delay this vote, take more time, explore the plans, do what's right for Cabarrus County Schools and our family. Please remember, you are elected by us to be our voice. Please listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
If you'll state your name, please.
Sure. I'm Sharmila Ramar. I'm coming from the community of Denton in Concord. So I'm here to oppose the IPT option, and I'm in support of the Green Plus Plan. So the reason I want to provide to this forum and to the board members is like, so we have been seeing a lot of industries around the globe, and whatever industry we take in, whatever policies we do, we always have a short-term solution and long-term solution, right? The short-term solution is something that will definitely work for the immediate needs, and we call it a slow-hanging fruit, but then it is a workaround. It is nothing but a Band-Aid, right? Long-term strategy is what we should always look out for, which will have the benefits that a lot of our kids will eventually be able to do that. So that's the main reason I'm trying to propose the Green Plus Plan today. And another big factor that I'm trying to understand from the community is like, what are public schools, right? Public schools were made with the intention of being in the local community, right? And for some reason, I feel like that has been out of the window today, and we are considering a lot of other things in place to make a choice and decision for students, which are not really beneficial for them. So we have to really think about how close it is for the kids, because there are a lot of things socially and emotionally they are attached to the local community. The travel as part of this I-85 South that we are talking about with the new model, that looks like not going to be an easier option for a lot of kids who have things like, you know, like after-school things, daycare facilities, impact, and then sports and other things. So we are talking about too much transport time, which should be the primary consideration for any of the solution that we are talking about. For some reason, I feel like we didn't get enough options here or the data, right? So I'm not going to bring in any data here, because I know all my fellow speakers talked about all the data that we can possibly get, and they are all absolutely a fact, and I'm still surprised, being in this community, how all those facts are being not considered before making, you know, like coming up with all those options. But it is okay. It is okay. So we are all together in this community, so we are bringing up a good plan, which is the Green Plus, with all the data, and I really want our teams to look into that data and make a decision based on data. We all know, in this pandemic age, everything is driven by data, whether it is the number of infections we get or the vaccination we roll out. So the logistics is the big part, right? So data is the key. So why can't we really look at the data? And why can't we make a good choice? Why can't we make it for the benefit of our teams? And the reason I'm here today is like, I have a son who's going to start up sixth grade in Harris Road Middle School this year, and he will be forced to go into the Winkler School next year, which is an IB program. So why do I have to go through that, right? In finishing it, I really want to say that quote I like is like, be the change that we want to see by Mahatma Gandhiji. Let's do that change that we need for the better effort for our children and our community. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
The next speaker is another daughter. She'll come together.
Okay. Pass. Good evening.
There you go. All right. So you're just going to talk in there?
Okay.
Can you state your name?
I'm Oksha Ramadi.
Thank you. You can begin.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I am Oksha Ramadi, a fifth-grade student from Cox Mill Elementary. I'm here to convey my concern on Cabarrus County Middle School rezoning plans for various important reasons. I am a Cox Mill Elementary student since kindergarten, and my friendships with my classmates has become deep over the years. Moving to a new school out of the zone would break my friendships. This would be hard on me, and I am unsure how I would cope up. One other reason is the extended travel time and its impact on my daily activities. One hour each way sitting on a bus would restrict my after-school programs like karate, swimming, tennis, singing, et cetera. I am not used to sitting two hours on a bus every day, and this change would impact my mental and physical health. Additionally, the commute itself is in a high-traffic region. With both my parents working and on occasions when I need to be dropped or picked up, it would be incredibly challenging. My parents bought our house so that it is near to the schools, and this new development would run down the whole purpose. Personally, I don't see a single positive aspect of this entire rezoning exercise. It doesn't help us in any shape or form. Please consider Green Plus Plan, which provides best possible solutions for all of the students involved. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to express my opinion.
Thank you. You may begin.
Hello. My name is Pranita, and I'm here in support of community-proposed Green Plus Plan. I thank Board of Education for providing me with an opportunity to express my feelings, my family's and my community feelings. Today, my speech would emphasize not on numbers, but on child emotions, human emotions and community emotions. I belong to middle class, and my husband and I work fifty to sixty hours per week in order to secure a future and provide the resources needed for my child, for her to excel in her life and do good to her society and country. We have purchased our house in Creston Berry Community, one and only one reason, proximity to schools. As we all know how valuable time is, and it cannot be replaced by anything, lost time is lost, period. I have observed this firsthand as a student and how it affected my grades. When my commute time went from fifteen minutes one way to an hour away, spending roughly two hours per day on the road drained my energy and caused exhaustion. It was not just my grades that went down, but also my self-confidence, my morale, which drastically impacted my career path. I heard one of the board members mentioning something about change. Change is inevitable. It's imminent, but growth is optional, as quoted by author John Maxwell. But the change should have positive impact. It should bring or do something good to the society and enhance life. And I cannot support if it is negatively impacting my family and my community. This commute would not just affect the students, but also my involvement, a parent involvement in school volunteering opportunities. In essence, I'm hoping that board would give importance to human emotions and not just numbers, as we and our children are humans and not just data points. I plead the board to consider and vote for community-proposed Green Plus Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Would you like to add any comments?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Karina. Good evening. Would you state your name, please?
Hi, this is Pavani Kurnati.
Okay.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of everybody today. I'm here to support Green Plus Plan. I feel that the concept of a public school and its zoning is all dependent on how close the school is to the community. That way, kids can go there safely, spend quality time, come back home, do their activities, and have some physical activity and get some academic support and all. But with this that's going on, the rezoning to Winkler School, I feel that is not considered at all. It's one and a half-hour commute for a kid is definitely not safe on the road, and I think this should definitely be considered. All the fellow speakers did bring up the facts of cost-effectiveness of considering Green Plus Plan, how healthy it is for kids physically, emotionally. So I really support Green Plus Plan, and because of this pandemic, I think that it really has taken a toll on kids. Please do not do a rezoning and really give them a shock. I think post-pandemic, it should definitely be a smooth transition for kids to school. If they have already been to that school, it would definitely be helpful, because they will be hearing about Harris Road Middle School from the seniors within the community, how the school is, how teachers are. Definitely, kids, when they were playing around, they discuss about what activities school has, how the school environment is. So this rezoning to a brand-new school will definitely give them a shock, and I hope you all consider the facts that the rest of the speakers have provided today, and do give a thought to the Green Plus Plan. I hope, I really request you all to do that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Board members, I just want to check to see if you'd like to take a recess for five minutes? Okay. May I have a? I'm just going to call that recess into order. Mark and Keith. Thank you. Have you already? Are we in recess right now? We're going to recess. They're going to hold them. Okay. Okay, board members, five minutes. Okay, board members, five minutes. Welcome back to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday Night Business Meeting for April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. We have just taken a recess, we are resuming at public comments. And we have Ms. Emily Escobar, and you may begin your time now.
I think you guys are all trying to make everything fair for everybody, but making us go to a school that we don't want to, I just, that's just not okay. I know you guys want this to work out, but how about you make a decision, like, by asking the people it's gonna affect? Like, I just really need you to hear me out. I don't wanna lose my friends, but when I'm going to Wrinkler, I probably will, 'cause I'm gonna go to Wrinkler, make new friends, and then I go to the high school I was going to go to, and then I'll lose all my friends and I'll have to restart all over again. And when I'm on the bus, I wanna be safe. My, my school has like a road, they like have like bus signs like to slow down when a bus comes, but to go to Wrinkler, I have to go over a highway, and I just don't think that's safe. I wanna be safe when I'm going on the bus, like to school and going from school back to my house. Um, I also think that I, I won't be able to eat dinner with my family because I'm gonna get home so late, and, um, I don't think I'll get a lot of sleep, uh, because I'll just, just won't have time. I'll have homework and everything. I like to read at night, um, like I normally read up to really late, but I never like get some sleep in the morning, but I have to wake up early and everything, and I don't wanna give up reading just so I, at night, just so I can get some sleep in. Uh, I play soccer, and, um, my, my soccer practice is, well, definitely like an hour after I'll get home, like I'll, like, I'll definitely miss soccer practice, and that means I'll never get better at soccer. I just, I just really, I really wanna go to Harris Road tonight. I don't, I don't wanna lose my friends, 'cause they're really important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, and you did a fantastic job. Our next speaker is Meredith Bostrom. I'm sorry, Karina, I could not hear you. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Bostrom, and I am a resident of Wellington Chase. I am here to discuss the Green Plus Proposal. This proposal involves the rezoning of neighborhoods north of seventy-three to northwest Cabarrus Middle School. This includes our neighborhood. Our subdivision is currently zoned for Harris Road Middle. The entrance to Wellington, to Wellington Chase is one mile from the middle school, and my home is one point two miles. The entrance to Wellington Chase faces the entrance to Moss Creek, the location of Harris Road Middle. My family is able to ride bikes from our home across this intersection to the Hector Henry Greenway, just behind Harris Road Middle School. Our children have all gone to Odell Primary and Elementary, which are also in this location. For us, these are neighborhood schools. Two of my children would be adversely affected with approval of the Green Plus Plan. I know that some parents tonight have said that all children benefit, but frankly, they do not have the right to make that statement about my family. There are a number of reasons why the Green Plus Plan is not the best for the community. First, the Green Plan rezones more children. The Green Plan rezones one thousand five hundred and eighty-two, and the Blue Plan rezones one thousand four hundred and forty-one. Second, children who are geographically closer to Harris Road Middle will have to go to a school further away. My home is one point two miles from Harris Road. If we are rezoned to northwest Cabarrus, the distance will be five point three miles, resulting in increased transportation costs for the county. Third, our neighborhoods were already the subject of rezoning in recent years. Our high schoolers were rezoned from Cox Mill to northwest Cabarrus High School because the four point four mile distance to Cox Mill was deemed too far. For perspective, the Christian Berry subdivision is about four point four miles from Harris Road Middle School. Please note that rezoning the same area twice is a violation of the guidelines this committee has set for realignment. Fourth, the crowding problems at the schools will not be solved with the Green Plus Plan. Northwest Middle is an older school, it's a smaller school, and it requires significant improvement. They do not currently have the infrastructure to accommodate the neighborhoods north of seventy-three. The Green Plus Plan brings utilization of Harris Road Middle from one hundred and sixteen percent to ninety-seven percent. The Blue Plan reduces utilization of Harris Road Middle to eighty-seven percent. When you are talking about over a thousand students, a ten percent difference between the two plans is a critical number. In short, the Green Plus Plan does not solve the problem. Students north of seventy-three will travel farther and attend a significantly older and lower-rated school. In addition, our elementary school feeder pattern is disrupted. Our children would, uh, going from elementary to middle, that pattern would be disrupted. Last week, you heard from some children who shared with you the burden of being rezoned. They did an excellent job, and what they said was absolutely true. Rezoning is such a burden on our children. However, the issues they mentioned are faced by all of the students in the county, not just the ones in those subdivisions. By proposing the Green Plus Plan, the parents of Highland Creek and Christian Berry and others have decided that this burden is not acceptable for their own children, but are willing to place that burden directly on the backs of other people's children, my children. What I want to communicate to these parents is that the children you are asking to rezon are not strangers. They are friends, they are teammates and fellow scouts. We are members of the same community. The Green Plus Plan was devised by members of these communities and forces rezoning of children in another part of town so that their own children may go to Harris Road. Giving zoning preferences to one or two neighborhoods over the others sets a concerning precedent for our community. Children who live one point two miles from Harris Road Middle will be forced to leave to make space for children who live four or five miles away. During the previous high school realignment, preference was given to some neighborhoods, and yet still Cox Mill High School remains overcrowded at a hundred and nineteen percent. Taking our neighborhoods out of Cox Mill did not solve the problem, and the Green Plan simply repeats this. I do not want anyone to be rezoned, I really don't, and I do not envy your decision. I am asking that you make this decision based on the criteria that you set at the beginning of this process. I am asking that you make this decision for the good of the children in the entire county, not just a few select neighborhoods. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Wrights. Good evening.
Good evening. Coming today before you as to agree with the Blue Plan that has been proposed at previous meetings, I come, would like to say specifically, based off the other people talked before me and on Monday night and Tuesday, that I, as one of a proponent of the Blue Plan, opposed the Green Plus Plan, do not consider any of the parents that have come before me or the children as elitists or entitled, as some of the words or adjectives I've used to describe that. I all see you as concerned community members for your children, just as I was. I recently had my high school student realigned to northwest Cabarrus in the last alignment, so I can understand the frustration that goes through anyone's mind standing on this side. However, a lot of the recurring themes that I've heard so far is specific to a couple communities. They've named themselves as Highland Creek and Cox Mill Neighbors. Not my words, it's just what I've heard. In the same respect, the alignment is made for the entirety of Cabarrus County. It factors in Hickory Ridge, way far away from my little neck of the woods up northwest. This is an alignment for the entire Cabarrus community, not necessarily one segment of it. Though I can feel for what these people and parents are going through, I do not feel that utilization should be factored on one specific area. In addition to that, student impact will always be difficult regardless of anything. The only alternative is not to change anything, in which case, we all know that cannot be done either. When you build a new school, people need to be there, which means other people will have to move to other schools. Feeder patterns have been mentioned quite a bit tonight. I heard the same mention on Tuesday during that meeting. I don't understand, and I've only got the data in which has been presented to me as an outside source, that between the Green Plus and the Blue Plan, feeder patterns are broken, but yet it seems the solution provided by the Green Plus Plan is to leave it alone. I don't understand how if it was broken, not changing it fixes it. Seems it only fixes it for the community that doesn't have to move. So with that being said, I appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of you, wish you guys the best, and in the next coming days and weeks, to make a very difficult decision for the entire community of Cabarrus County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Cochran. And he will be speaking on graduation. Good evening. If you'll slide to your left just a little bit, thank you.
My name is Sam Cochran, and I'm the senior class president at Concord High School, and I've committed to the United States Air Force Academy. My senior year has not been what I expected. The fall of my senior year, I was very disappointed with the idea of attending school for my laptop, not playing fall football, king of the court, lunch with my friends and more. These things are gone, and all seniors that have had to come to terms with the rites of passage that we missed. However, I am thankful to the school board for figuring out a way for Plan B and now Plan A to happen. I'm coming to you today to discuss graduation. As COVID numbers decrease and vaccinated people increase, I am asking you to rethink what we can do to enhance graduation for seniors. I just played in a Concord-Kinapolis football game, and we had approximately fifteen hundred spectators in the stands. Given this, I know we can do better than a graduation with seniors riding around a track to receive a diploma. Graduation at the Speedway presents limitations to a personalized, in-person graduation. First, it makes it impossible for me to see my friends graduate. Graduation should not be an isolating experience. It is Graduation should not be an isolating experience, it is shared as a collective group. It is about being with my classmates, hearing live speeches, turning the tassel, throwing the cap, taking pictures. I feel being in a car ride around a track with my parents, being handed a diploma and then driving away is an isolating experience. Second, my parents won't really see me receive my diploma. My father will be driving and my mom will be in the backseat. She will only see me from the back of my head as I receive a diploma. Third, and I think the most important, walking across the stage at graduation is a rite of passage for every senior. Many of you can probably remember yourselves walking across the stage to receive a diploma. It is a physical action, a walking to a different phase of life, an iconic experience, a rite of passage that everyone should experience. Sitting in a car and being handed a diploma does not replace it. Last year, COVID was more widespread, now we are in a completely different situation and I am asking for us to think differently about graduation. There are school systems all around us doing graduation differently. Kinapolis City Schools and Rowan County Salisbury Schools are having normal graduation ceremonies in their football stadiums. Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools are having a normal in-person graduation at Bojangles Coliseum. We should not be penalized because the Speedway is near us or because this decision was made too early. It is not too late to make this right. If we must use the Speedway, how can we do it differently to make this graduation experience less isolating and more collective? Can we consider not using cars at all and instead using the infield area with chairs? Can we consider using our football stadiums? I'm asking you to consider how we can make this happen rather than coming up with reasons why it is impossible. In order to make this happen, I recommend you create a group with parents, teachers and students, and I volunteer to be part of that group. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Vincent.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Vincent, I'm here as a resident of the Allen Mills community and I stand in support of the Green Plus plan. The Green Plus plan outlines key details and facts to ensure our children are put in the best situation. Simply put, the Green Plus plan is the most reasonable. This is not a case that speaks to our communities being inconvenienced, but rather wanting what is best for our children. My statements may be an iteration of the individuals before me and if it is, that shows the true value and importance of the decision and long-lasting effects that could occur. The notion of moving children from a non-IV elementary school to a IB middle school for three years and back to a IB high school, non-IV high school, just doesn't seem reasonable for the children within the community that could be affected. That detriment extends beyond today. It could take a toll on our kids during middle school and again during high school, interrupting their social relationships time and time again. The Green Plus plan keeps the kids north of 73 and south of 85 going to the same middle school and high school throughout, moving a small block of students from new developments using the two-tier approach outlined in our Green Plus plan. The idea of pulling kids from a school, in my neighborhood at least, that is three miles away and approving a plan to attend school that is eight miles away through heavily trafficked area of Pablo Tent in 85 just isn't reasonable, not to mention the time constraint related to the bus rides and car riders for the children to and from. Ensuring transportation efficiencies and safety considerations for our children is key to ensure fewer students do not have longer commutes. Within the Green Plus plan, a large number of students going to three different schools will have a better feeder pattern than the IPT plan that was proposed. This plan does not only benefit a subset of people, it's just a better option for the students across multiple communities. I ask that each of you members of the BOE take a moment to review and vote in favor of the Green Plus plan, listening to the voices of the citizens about the children within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Would you state your name, please?
Suresh Chalasani.
Okay, I'm making sure, okay, go ahead, you can begin.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for taking the time to listen to us. And I'm here to just basically say strongly enough, you know, to look at the Green Plus plan because myself, I have a daughter, which is, she's in fifth grade, right, fifth grade, she's going to go to Middle and she's going to one year at Harris and that pattern is going to break and she'll be forced to go to IB curriculum which she doesn't like or we don't want her to, or you know, it's completely different and then she comes back to the regular curriculum. So all I'm, I don't want to repeat everything, the traffic and the time and everything, but I strongly ask you to look at the Green Plus plan, take some time, please go through the plan and do what is good for the students. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Just stand here and... Good evening. Would you state your name, please?
I'm Malika Avadhanula.
You can begin.
I'm Malika from Edenton Community. I thank you personally for giving me an opportunity to make my voice heard. I grew up in a different country where culture and education are entirely different. As I am raising my American-born kids, I am educating myself and kids at the same time. Education system here and the freedom fascinates me. In fact, as a parent of two elementary-going kids, soon enough, I am concerned about kids' commute, feeder patterns and the impact it has on the community. As a member of the community and a taxpayer, I am here to support the Green Plus plan. My concern here is about the kids who commute in a school bus to and fro. Every single day, that is almost 40 to 50 minutes-ish, they are going to ruin their extracurricular activities, miss their playtime and most important thing, even some might lose their family time. As a matter of fact, my husband works night shifts. If this pattern continues with the commute, later on, my kids are going to be impacted along with the other kids in the community. Another topic that concerns me more right now is the transition that kids have to go through from elementary to middle school and middle to high school. When I was having conversations with my friends and relatives in town, I have observed that kids were already stressed out due to the pandemic and now they are depressed that they might lose their friends as well. So keeping all these in mind, please do consider our Green Plus plan and we all hope that you will do the needful. I do appreciate your valuable time, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll state your name, please.
My name is Siva Sangri and this is the third time I'm here in front of the board for the final time to plead with you that the plan that is on the table is, is, at first, we're very disappointed that the Green Plus team did not get to present their plan in its entirety. I was hoping that we keep the Green Plus plan and the IPT proposal, compare and contrast and probably take a decision from there. So my confidence with the board is currently low. I was hoping that we will have that opportunity, but we're not going to have that. We have these three-minute slots, all of us are trying to write our speeches and, you know, plug in as much as possible. There are 350 families out there who are struggling to tell you that this is not okay. And there are about 45 of us who come here today who are representing those 350 to 60 families. If this is not a representation of a part of a community, then I do not understand what is, what number, what number would make you feel that this is, this community is not okay with this. I understand that your goal is to do good for all in the community, but we are a part of that and we represent about 28% of that. So the Green Plus plan beautifully puts out something, there is something in that for every kid in the community. It is unlike the IPT proposal, which is just moving numbers, moving students across I-85 and get them farther away from their home school. I looked up, based on the debates during the elections, I looked up a term called busing, which is very interesting, it was a very, I thought it was a turning point during the debates, but I feel like that's exactly what's happening here. We are being taken out of our home schools from where we are and we are just being asked to go farther, for the good of the community. No. So we oppose this plan and we completely support the Green Plus plan and we request you to consider the points, points that are better about the Green Plus plan and make a decision. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karina. So Speaker 39 is Joe Kirkwood. And he'll stand right here. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Joe Kirkwood. I want to start by just using the word fair play. Respect for other, respect for rules or equal treatment of all concerned. Just a little bit about me very quickly, my father came to the United States as a teenager, served in the United States Air Force, living out his American dream. I came and joined him as a teenager in high school. We understand the importance of fair play, we understand hard work, respecting the rule of law. I'm here to ask you to not vote for the current proposed alignment. The negative impact on the children in our community is significant and should be considered. I'm a parent, friend, neighbor, soccer coach, directly with the kids that are affected by this plan, including three of my own. Over the weekend, I witnessed a very intense soccer game where we were competing against kids that were a little bit older, faster, stronger, and we signed up for it, we knew what we were getting ourselves into. What came with that unfortunately was some unsportsmanlike behavior that took over the game in a manner that we thought was maybe not fair. It happens. What I was a little bit disturbed by was the referee in that game was something that lacked some substantial credibility and we were really asking for the referee to just be the voice for these children, yeah, to help navigate through a game that wasn't maybe being played fairly perhaps. This is, there was some unsportsmanlike behavior during the game, this was difficult for the kids, but the referee was there, the referees are always there to help in different sports as well, boxing, baseball, football. I'm sure we can all relate somehow. You guys are the referees here today and it's not too late to have an impact and allow fair play. It's not too late to make things right and give these kids a chance to compete fairly. Similarly, I see the IPT, the Public Advisory Committee, Mr. Cropper, Mr. Schultz, as the older, more experienced team and us, the parents, as the smaller, less experienced ones. You, the school board, are the referees and all we're really asking the board to do is to recognize the faults in the current realignment process and give our children fair play. The first public information session occurred on October 8th, asking members of the community to serve in the Public Advisory Committee. The first three realignment options were presented by Cropper to IPT on October 12th. Over 1,700 people have signed this petition in opposition of the PPT recommendation. I am requesting that you use your knowledge of the game and respect for the rules of equal treatment of all concerned, I am requesting for fair play. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Randall.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lynn Randall, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Ms. Sendage, scoring for Green Plus was requested at February 11th Public Info Session, but it was not executed and made public until after the April 6th meeting. So I respectfully request that all board members take time to consider this partial scoring method and to request more details before making your final decision. As to the 97% Harris Road Middle School utilization sticking point, I want to point out that on page 23 of the District 2015 Capital Plan, the 97% was established as the acceptable target for HRMS for when the new middle school would open. Green Plus met that goal. In addition, other schools from the IPT plan have similar percentages. Hickory Ridge High School, 98%, Patriot Elementary School, 99%, Cox Mill High School, 113%. How can those percentages be deemed acceptable but not HRMS at 97%? Green Plus receives a utilization score of six compared to the IPT score of seven. As to the Green Plus shortcomings, that there is not a benefit to relieve our middle school capacity in a way that helps the long-term growth of the county in alignment with Capital Plan. Green Plus has suggested that future growth receive a scoring metric for determining the best plan. How can the public anticipate future growth when the original 2015 Capital Plan rates anticipated future growth and capacity only through spring 2020? I request that additional future capacity scoring information be updated and made public to make these important decisions. It seems to me that the growth in the southwest corner has been ignored for quite a while without proposing better adjusted capital plans for that area. As to demographics, many board members spoke last Tuesday night about how Green Plus is so closely scored to the IPT plan and many noted that five of the six-point difference was due to demographics. Ms. Carpenter suggested finding a way to tweak the demographic score points. The middle school demographic diversity percentage information is located on page 22 of the current IPT proposal, but not using the four-point scoring criteria established to be used by Cropper or most recently applied to revised yellow and blue plans from March 15th. I request tonight that it score Green Plus and be made public in order to understand the demographic scoring compilation. Please look carefully at the IPT scoring of Winkler Middle School and notice how the percentage points changed the most from any other middle school. Based on the diversity of the speakers at previous board meetings, I would hope that school board members would not find it acceptable to racially target our southwest neighborhoods in order to improve demographic diversity or that this would keep a school board member from voting for our plan, especially when the diversity scores at Concord Middle School and Mount Pleasant Middle School, which are much further from district standards, have undergone no changes to get the guidelines. Finally, concerning transportation, inconveniencing the southwest neighborhoods, almost 25% of the overall 1,441 impacted students and their families should not be acceptable. Except for Winkler, all other middle school transportation ride times increase in the afternoon by at least six or more minutes because of extra students needing transportation. Yet Winkler scores 47 minutes for both AM and PM. How can this be possible with additional bus stops? Please vote for more time to fully score the Green Plus plan and let the 1,792change.org petitioners, signers know that you're listening to their concerns.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Kaye Shumay and first I'm gonna let my daughter speak on the audio that she recorded.
Okay, I'm gonna, for just for the viewing audience so that they'll understand that you're gonna play a tape.
And her name is Sophia Shumay, she's a third grader at Cox Mill Elementary School.
Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Sophia. I am a third-grade student of Cox Mill Elementary School. I've been studying Mandarin now for four years and tomorrow I have a big test on Mandarin fluency, but instead of studying, I am here speaking with you. Please tell me, what is the point? Please tell me, what is the point of studying Mandarin for four years? What is the point of taking this test tomorrow? What is the point of all these achievements I've made and extracurricular activities if they will all be wasted? Please tell me, what is the point of all that stuff? Your plan to move all the Mandarin kittens to Roberta Road Middle School is not going to work. Their, our parents will not be able to drive us there because most of them are working, and there are no buses to take us there. Winkler Middle School has no Mandarin and has buses, but at least two hours on them each day. And we'll have no more extracurricular activities because every time, the time that we're supposed to be there, we're gonna be on that bus. We'll lose our friends from school because we have to move to a new, new middle school. We'll make new friends in Winkler and lose them again because we have to go to high school. We'll lose our friends from extracurricular activities because we'll have no time to go there. Please consider Green Plus Plan to use as your plan, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So she's very passionate like her mother.
She is.
And I can go ahead and start.
You've got a little over a minute.
Yeah, my name is Kaye Shumay. I'm her mother, and we both live in Highland Creek Community, and I am speaking on behalf of my daughter and many other Mandarin immersion kids who, as I know, are very, very upset about the possible inability to go to Harris Road Middle School and continue learning Mandarin because of possibility of IPT plan being approved by you guys. All of them have been studying very hard, and going to Roberta Road Middle School is gonna be impossible for them simply because it's so far away, and we are working parents. We won't be able to get them there. And like my daughter said, there are no buses for Mandarin immersion, the Spanish immersion programs. There are no buses to take them from our neighborhood to that school. So the other option is to go to Winkler. Winkler doesn't have Mandarin immersion. Winkler has ID program choice. That is not my choice, that is not my daughter's choice, that is not their choice. So they have an option of opting out. That will put them in a small group of outsiders. So that will be a reason for them to be bullied, and as you probably know, that will be a significant, if not devastating, impact on their future social and mental development. Please, I beg you, please do not do that to my child or any other children. That is devastating. I just beg you not to do that. And yes, we are working families. We're not elitist, elitist, we're not rich fancy people. We work, we pay our taxes, and we vote, and we would like for Cabarrus County School and you guys to use our taxpayers' money in a way that will support our children, not to harm them, not now, not in the future. And that's where I am, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Number forty-four, stand forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Karina.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Would you state your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Dr. Nimble, and I am from Edmonton. I am here to support the Green Plus Plan, and I am going to oppose the IPT proposal. Ma'am, I want to, I do not want to say about everybody, but I want to share my own personal problem with that IPT plan. Actually, I came from the Connecticut, and I bought a very expensive house nearby the Concord in the Cabarrus County just because my kids can go to the nearby public schools. That was the purpose, to buy that expensive house. Otherwise, I won't, you know, I did not consider to come here and buy this type of expensive house. So I'm very disappointed that the green plan could not be presented in its full form. If you will rezoning, so my kids will suffer, and that time, they should have to be spent with their family, with me, and the other curriculum activities. They will spend that time in commuting only. The forty-five minutes is very big amount for my small kids, so I do not want that they, they commute or they suffer into the bus or the bus waiting in that COVID situation. So, I want to say that please consider the great, that Green Plus Plan and reconsider our case. I wanted to say that I am from the Edmonton community, and in that community, there are only one zero three houses. So I think there are like fewer kids to be going into the future middle school or the high school. So if you will reconsider all the things, I think that plan could also be adjust that smaller amount of kids in that plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Betty Archler.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Betty Archler, and I am a fifth grader at Cox Mill Elementary School. I am excited to go to Harris Road Middle School with my friends that are a grade older. I want you to vote for the Green Plus Plan so I don't have to change schools. When I found out about the rezoning, I was very disappointed because I wanted to play softball at the Harris Road Middle School like my older brother who played baseball there. I wanted to follow in his footsteps. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Alderassi, and it's regarding graduation.
Good evening. Hi.
Hi. You may start.
Okay. My name's Lisa Alderassi. My son is a senior at Northwest High School. I'm here about graduation. First, I want to say thank you. It's been a long night. I'm sure you've had enough. I also would like to, I'm sure you're all as impressed with Sam Cochran as I was, and I would like to support everything he said and just kind of reinforce a couple of things. Cabarrus County students are the only kids in the surrounding area that are not being allowed to have an in-person graduation. Mecklenburg, Roan, Iredell, Asheville, Guilford, all having in-person graduations on their football fields. Montgomery County is surveying their families and to see what they would prefer. Mooresville High School is willing to hold two ceremonies in order to have in-person graduation. Cabarrus County High Schools had football this spring. Clearly, there's a way to work it out and stay within COVID guidelines and mandates, none of which even remotely call for a drive-through graduation at this point. All year, we asked these kids to accept everything that they lost. I think we can all agree, this is the worst senior year ever, even more so than last year. We told them if they made the sacrifices being asked of them, eventually, things would get better. Why should that be true only for the graduates that don't live in Cabarrus County? This decision needs to be changed. We've been told all along that it's fluid, everything is fluid, everything can change at any moment. Let's just change this decision. At a minimum, at least put the question out to the senior families, see what they want if they're, if, you know, take a poll, anything, I don't know, something needs to be done. Lastly, I'm just gonna leave you with a question. How many of you have resumed going to restaurants? What if everyone around you was allowed to go to a restaurant, but you were told you have to keep going to the drive-through? Would that sit with you? I don't think so. So thank you for your time, and have a great, great night.
Thank you for being here. And our last speaker is Tamara Behan, and this is regarding graduation as well.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good.
And I'm gonna cry. I'm good at that.
We may cry with you.
Go ahead. My name is Tamara, or Tammy Behan, and my son is a senior at Concord. And just like Sam said, we gotta do something for these kids. Something's got to be normal for these kids. They have sat at home on those blamed computers for a year, and they've tried so hard to learn, tried so hard to be a part of something. My son is actually in counseling at a hundred dollars a pop because he is having such a hard time with this separation anxiety. He's even thought about going to the parking deck and just ending it. And we had the Concord-Kennapples game, over fifteen-hundred people in that stadium. Our stadium will hold thirteen-thousand people, so at fifty percent, that's six-thousand people. I've never seen six-thousand people at a graduation. But those kids need to walk across the property, get their diploma, be able to move their tassels and throw their hats and take pictures of themselves with their friends so they can say, "We had something. Cabarrus County did something for us." I've heard my son say, "Mama, they forgot about us." They don't care. They don't care that we've missed it all. They just want to do what's easy. Easy is not in a car to drive by and pick up something after I paid money for that cap and gown. Easy is not being part of a drive-through picture show. Easy is allowing these kids to do something. Prove to them that they are worth it. You did it. You passed all of your classes online. You did it. Let them be able to see their friends, their family, and themselves in some kind of a highlight, some kind of a something. I've been a part of Cabarrus County Schools since nineteen-sixty-eight, and this has been the saddest two years I've ever had with this school system. My daughter grad, I graduated from Concord in nineteen-eighty. My daughter graduated from Concord in oh-one. My daughter graduated from Concord in oh-three, and I was nine months pregnant. My son will graduate in twenty-twenty-one. Please let these kids walk to get that piece of paper they've worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, board members, we are going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Eleven point zero one. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter. Second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, and next, we're going to move to the action agenda and start with twelve point zero one, and we will have Mr. Tim Louder and Mr. Chuck Taylor to the podium, please. And this is regarding the lawn services contract. And board members, just for time, is there any questions or additional information that you need?
How many of these were new companies? How many were new companies that we have dealt with before?
Uh, just one.
Just one.
Yes, sir.
Any other board members? Okay, with that, may I have a motion that the lawn services contract be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We will move to twelve point zero two and have Ms. Klutz to the podium, and this is regarding the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, better known as ESR funds. Board members, I will just ask if you have any comments or questions. I know that we've had discussions regarding this at our work session. Hearing none, may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we had, we had mentioned something earlier and I, just for clarification purposes, uh, you know, I think me and Mr. Walters both had asked for clarification on, for the, about heating and air conditioning systems, and you had kind of said, you had kind of discussed that with the county and what these were going to be used for, and they had assured us that, you know, y'all had said you wanted, that we were gonna be using this for, and if you can kind of say what we're gonna kind of use this for, but, but that if something did happen, because we have so many of those systems that are in, in such dire need, that the county had assured us that if something did happen, that we could get that taken care of, or, you say it in your own words, okay? I don't want to put words in your mouth, okay?
Thank you, I will. So I was saying earlier today that with this ESR plan, we needed the county's partnership, and so we addressed the county and asked if they would partner in a certain way. The partnership that we came to was a compromise of a couple of plans, but the compromise included us using ESR, ESR funds for our operating expenses, and the county participating more with the deferred maintenance. And so that was their preference, is that, that they support the capital deferred maintenance, and we support the operating with our ESR funds. And that's what you're referring to, our discussion earlier today. And so the, the hope is that the, the county will be able to make a significant dent in our capital deferred maintenance, and we'll be able to make some progress over the next couple of years, because this is a three-year plan, and we will be using our operating, our ESR funds for operating for the next three years, so that will allow additional dollars to go into the deferred maintenance and hit some of those areas.
Ms. Carpenter, is that good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Board members, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve the use of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, better known as ESR funds, as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
Say it.
A second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. And I guess we keep you for twelve point zero three and the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget for Cabarrus County Schools. And I will just, same thing. Comments or questions? I know board members have submitted requests for information, and I think those have been pretty much answered. Does anyone have anything else tonight? Comments or questions?
There's one, one thing on the capital improvements, I guess, greater than five-hundred thousand, that's the same number that we had last year. Is that right? Two-hundred-and-ninety-one million, five-hundred thousand. So no changes from?
Yes, that is, because that's the, the capital plan that the board approved, the tenure plan did not change.
So we haven't modified, we obviously didn't modify.
We did not. The board did not adjust that. If you recall, the board recently voted on that, and we did not modify that plan. It stayed the same.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion that the board approve the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget for Cabarrus County Schools?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Farr and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. And next up, we will have interim superintendent Brian Schultz for twelve point zero four and the middle school realignment recommendation.
It seems so weird to be presenting up here.
It seems so weird to be presenting up here. But I can get used to it, that's for sure. All right, so I'll wait for, Mr. Wiger is gonna pull up PowerPoint here. While he's doing that, just like to acknowledge, I got some folks in the room that have worked on IPT, on the internal planning team along with this middle school alignment process. They're here to help answer questions at the end if need be. But we have, sir in the back, Alan Simansky, over program choice, Art Whitaker, who looks really good tonight, by the way. Of course, you know Francis Lane. And then we have Michael, almost Dr. Michael Williams back in the back, principal at Winkler Middle School. Sue Burns back there also is not just a policy person. She's also served on that, as in her policy committee as well. So what I'd like to do tonight is just go through some slides with you. Let me make sure the clicker works. And just really go through some facts and details about the internal planning team functions, Mr. Cropper's function. I believe, I believe we have him online as well. He's, I forgot to mention, Mr. Cropper, are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, great. So he's here to answer any questions as well. And just kind of explain some things, go through the questions we've had about Green Plus to clarify, and then questions about the internal planning team's recommendation for realignment for middle school. And so first of all, obviously, the internal planning team and the function of the internal planning team is-- and I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but the objective is to create a new zone for a new middle school. And we talked a lot about certain areas. But this was a, this is a plan for the whole community, to benefit the whole community. Because we are blessed to have great, you know, commissioners, you know, who you referred to earlier, Ms. Grimsley, who partnered with us to build new schools. And with that then comes this realignment piece. So we wanted to minimize impact and, or minimize the impact on students with the largest amount of benefit to our buildings. Reduce any future realignments that we possibly could. This is not a process, as I've said before, that we like to go through. It's a necessary part of a growing community. But we want to eliminate or reduce as much as possible, ensure programs aren't negatively impacted, and focus on that transition piece we heard. You know, that's, that can be a difficult thing to transition through a feeder pattern or to a different school. So that's really important. And as part of that, we allow that legacy policy where the, an eighth grade student can maintain at their current school or a fifth grade student can maintain at their current school. And then Cropper helped us with the analytical process, the maps, the procedure and process for internal and external meetings, web content, all the surveys, forms, statistics that you've seen, and then produce the data-related options under that. So it's a true partnership between a hired consultant who does this. And you heard last week, when asked, he's testified in front of federal court in desegregation cases and helps districts all across the nation, specifically in his work, which is a, it's a very specialized piece of work. So the IPT made a recommendation, it was a, the realignment recommendations presented to the board was created from over seven to eight months of dedication from this internal staff who have the certain specific roles, somebody represented here tonight. So you'll see transportation, student services, GIS, school administration, district administration, policy and procedure, communication, auxiliary services, capital planning, and facilities. So it's a full-scale expertise in terms of the people who run a school district, the eighth-largest school district in the state of North Carolina. These are our experts. You know, I'll point out, since Art's here, he transports kids, 26,000 students, to and from school every day. That is no small feat that he moves a city back and forth from school to home every day. And then here's our membership of our internal planning team. So you can see, I'll point out Robert Klutz. He recently retired, was a driver's ed, over driver's ed for some 20 years. Robert was also our transportation director prior to that role. So Robert even lent his expertise to this before he left. And you also see some of the principals on there who are going to be impacted by this. And we left some pimp principals advisory. I'll say, they weren't advisory. They came to just about every single meeting and really gave a lot of great feedback. So we have everybody from communications to operations that served on that internal planning team. There's some question about communications. I want to make sure that we address that. Timeline of communication, you see we started that back in September. This specifically was about the public advisory committee. So there's multiple public advisory committee and the first public information session. So you can see quite a timeline to kick this off back in late September. And again, I'm not going to read through all those. In fact, we have four slides of communication, which really just kind of scratches the surface. As you know, we had free-flowing communication back and forth to and from community members, to and from board members, to and from staff members. This is some of the extern, some of the main external communications. Promotion of Public Information Session 2, related to that. The next slide is the Communication Regarding Announcements and Promotions of Public Information Session 3. That takes us all the way through February. And again, Public Information Session 3 was one that we added on to the process, one that we did not have planned. But because we were listening to the community, needed more information, we added another information, which then added another month on to this process to make sure that we were thorough in our analysis. And then lastly, this communication, this last push about knowing that we're gonna have a public hearing, which took place. We announced it at the board meeting the night that we decided upon that. And then did mobile push notifications, social media posts, and then district website. In addition to the, some of those timelines of communication, it demonstrates the community outreach that we had. We also have the CCSrealignment.com. The analytics from that website showed that the community engaged over 10,000 different times on that website. People knew where to go to get information. And that was the, one of the main sources that was hit over 10,000 times during this process. The last two public informations were attended by nearly 200 people. To put that in perspective, our recommendation is a little, impacting a little over 1,500 students. The last high school realignment that impacted over 4,000 students, we had about the same amount of people at those public information sessions during a pandemic than we did during the last realignment process. And in terms of demographics, so that was based on, it was not weighted more than any, all the items were weighted the same. But that is based on how realignment options either move closer to the district's average composition or further away from the district's average. So the Green Community Plus Plan showed that demographic diversity for schools did not improve and move schools further away from the district averages than all the other options. A higher score that indicated a less demographically diverse educational environment for students. Public Advisory Committee, we brought that up a few times. The Public Advisory Committee, and you saw back on the communication timeline, we started advertising that back in early October. So Cabarrus County Schools received 20 applications. Eleven applications were selected. We did not receive any applications from Highland Creek, Chris and Berry, Allen Mills, or Edenton. All school zones, so of those 20, we made sure that all school zones that were going to be impacted by this realignment were represented. Harris Road was represented, Hickory Ridge Middle School is represented, CC Griffin was represented, Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is represented, Winkler, and JM Freese. We had three public advisory committee meetings. Those were spaced out periodically to get feedback from some map proposals. You saw those last time. And then we did have one member that did drop out after the first meeting and made multiple attempts to contact the person and really don't know why that person dropped out. In terms of the scoring sheets, the middle, the multiple realignment options were scored to allow a simplified way to compare current zones. You heard Mr. Cropper last week say, "We got 40 pages of data on each map that was created." So one of the feedback, one of the pieces of feedback from the Public Advisory Committee was, "Can you please simplify this?" And so that scoring option was created to simplify and modify that, the scoring, so it'd make it easier to understand, more palatable to the folks. Not all, we did not score. Like you saw about 17 maps that were presented to you last time, that, all those iterations. We didn't score every single one. Because when we present one, somebody said, "Well, how about this?" And then immediately there were some things that popped up and the internal planning team or the public advisory committee said, "No, we can't, we can't do that one." There were just some, some game stoppers, I think, on some maps that we didn't, so we didn't score all of them. I'll say, we only, we not, we, if the initial review sort of revealed some options that weren't viable. So the community green and green plus plans were studied by the internal planning team, but not initially scored. The reason they weren't initially scored was because it kept Harris Road Middle School at 97% utilization. That's, you know, utilization's really important in this process because we have to account for future growth. When we got the request to do that, we scored it in full transparency. Harris Road Middle School is one of the fastest-growing areas for Cabarrus County. I would venture to say even in the state. And then once plans were scored, the IPT reviewed all the underlying data. So we didn't just take a score at face value. Right? So we looked at what the underlying data said and how that score got to where it was and why it got that way. And then the great, once the Green Plus Plan was scored, it actually ranked as the worst scoring option that we had with multiple long and short-term concerns. So I want to talk to you about some of those multiple long and short-term concerns. The first one, I think this map is really, really telling. So this is actually a map of the Green Plus Plan. So let me define that a little bit. So see Harris Road Middle School in the orange? And my wife tells me I'm colorblind, so it's the one to the left. And in the middle, you see HRMS in there. So I think that's always that orange. So the, so the Green Plus Plan is recommending that little crown, the one that's outlined in green at the top of the orange, to move that section to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. And then if you slide over to your right, the place outlined in green that's current, Winkler, in the yellow. So they're proposing to move both of those areas in their Green Plus Plan to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. And so, and then the other thing I think is really important noting is that you'll see the two green houses in the middle of Harris Road. Those are proposed, those are approved developments that are pending construction. So that's where the satelliteing comes in and proposes to not allow them to go to Harris Road Middle School, but to satellite them to another, another middle school. So almost creating a Swiss cheese-like, you know, inside, creating a zone within a middle school zone already. And there are, there are negative consequences for doing that. So the last thing, I think, a couple of last things I'll point out with this map because it is so visual. If you look north of the Harris Road Middle School, where Green Plus is proposing to move, you will see that there are two active housing developments. There's an approved that's inactive and there's approved that's pending construction. Now compare that to all of the housing development that is active, proposed, and approved within Harris Road. And that is being left at 90%, 97% with all of that proposed activity and construction. And then think about how fast that, that 97% becomes a percent larger than 100%. You can also say that, well, we've been able to, in the IPT plan, leave that 87%, account for that growth. Also, you'll see that we've been able to, in the Winkler Plan, we've been able to leave that in the low 80s to account for any growth that happens in Winkler Middle. But I'll pause there. Does anybody have any questions about that, about that map? Because I see some--
Board members, comments or questions?
I'm gonna ask one, Brian. So just back on one of the slides and it said, oh, everyone was notified that would have been impacted. And could you just give us--
Which comment, I'm sorry?
The one about how they were all notified about the, what was gonna take place with the realignment, how--
On the communication timeline?
Right, as far as emails and phone calls and how--
Yeah, so I'll just, so I'll give an example of that. So if we look just at the beginning here, so superintendent's bio message, article posted on the website, black bag board connect ed message, social media posts, superintendent comments again, articles to the CCS website. So those are, that's our, you know, multiple modems of communication.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions yet?
Yeah, what is a mobile app push? How many people is that?
I don't, I don't know how many people that we have signed up for that, but I could certainly find that out.
Okay, I just, thanks.
But that's basically when a notification is pushed out through. Like I know on my CCS app on my phone, when something gets pushed out, I have a little alert that comes up that says I have--
Not everybody has that, but everybody gets a connect ed, right?
Correct, yeah.
Excuse me. The yellow code right now, what is that yellow code supposed to be? Is that the new district or is that the, what's the--
What's it called, orange?
The orange, excuse me, orange?
That's Harris Road, that's Harris Road. And this is the Green Plan proposal.
Okay, that is, that is the current Harris Road District right now. The white one, what is, or--
No, that's, that's the current Green Plan proposal.
Is that the high school district? Is that what those colors are?
I'm just trying to figure out what these colors are right now.
You're talking about-- Francis Kansas, that one.
The map I'm looking at right now, what, what are those, those districts right now? What is the purple one?
The purple is what is proposed for the Green Plus Plan to move to Northwest Middle School.
I mean, but that, that district, what is that district right now? That purple district?
Northwest Cabarrus Middle School.
Is that, that's Northwest Middle School District?
You see the arrow that's pointing over to where it says NCMS?
So that, that whole purple district though, is that Northwest?
It is not currently Northwest. It is proposed to be Northwest in the Green Plus Community Plan.
Okay, and, and it, but you're, you've got it outlined, that green one.
That shows that that's the area that they're trying to take from Harris Road to Northwest Middle School.
But is it Northwest Middle still right?
It is not. It actually, Northwest Middle, if you, at the very top of that green line, that's the boundary for Northwest Middle School now.
You've lost me. That's why I was asking, what's that map look like right now?
So the, the map right now, the purple area that you're pointing out that's outlined in green is actually orange. That is actually Harris Road Middle School.
It's the yellow color right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking, okay. So it's that, so it's the Harris Road right now?
Correct. And then the area that's outlined in green, that is the light yellow, that, that is actually Harris, that is Harris Road, or that is Harold E. Winkler Middle School that was, they're proposing to move to Northwest Middle School.
No, 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 opposite, opposite. Sorry, that the area outlined in yellow is currently Northwest Middle. So if we move all those kids into Northwest from Harris Road Middle, we have to move kids out of Northwest Middle into Winkler. And so the area south of 85 in the yellow area outlined in green is what the community plan proposes to move to Winkler. And I think we need to be real clear that we're looking at what the proposal is from the Green Plus Plan. This is exact, this is all that we're looking at.
Does that also represent the high school zone, or am I wrong?
I'm sorry?
Does the purple kind represent the high school zone or the yellow?
It's similar, similar. The high school zone does come down to Northwest Cabarrus. High School Zone does come down to 73 there between Cox Mill High and Northwest High. But there are some differences over in the Winkler area.
So if you take, if you take a look at, thank you, Francis. If you take a look at the first bullet there, so the, the Green Plus proposal moves 238 middle school students to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. That would be from Harris Road. They also, so that's 238, plus they move 347 students from Northwest to Winkler. And we'll get into those numbers in a little bit. But 200 and 300 are over 550 students that are moving in this plan.
So Brian, I just want to recap that, just so it's clarified. That's a lot of information. That's a lot of information. So, the crown, if you will, outlined in the green, okay? That currently is Harris Road.
Correct.
Their plan is to move those to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School.
Correct.
The green, the lower green outline, is currently Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and they're proposing to move those to North, to Harold, to Winkler.
That's correct. Impacting over 550 students.
And while we're doing that, the subdivisions that would be, are only approved pending construction, which are currently Harris Road Middle School per se, are being moved to Winkler as well.
That's correct. They propose to satellite them, and I don't know if they specified Winkler, but move to the closest middle school, which would either be Winkler or Northwest. And notice that if they do go to Winkler, they actually do travel over 85 in that process. So, I'll break down these numbers a little bit more. Any other questions on this? I think this graphic is really, really important for you to understand and the impact that it has on multiple students.
So, I really hate to throw a wrench in this, but it would really help to have, like, what the existing is right now. I think that's what Ms. Karpberger is probably getting all confused.
Yeah. That's what I was saying, to see what the existing was because that, that kind of helps me, too.
And if you can't do that, let's just talk it through. So, the purple, now purple...
So, current.
Is currently Northwest Cabarrus Middle School.
Yeah. So, current, if you colored the crown on the orange, colored orange, that's Harris Road Middle School right now. So, you fill in the purple crown, that's Winkler's, or, I'm sorry, that's Harris Road's current. If you take away the light yellow that circled in green, that is, yeah, make sure I'm telling you right. Yeah, that is currently purple. The light yellow is currently purple, currently Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and their proposal is to make it light yellow, to make it Winkler. So, it's taking, it's adding a chunk to Northwest and taking away a chunk to Northwest.
Okay. Does everyone understand that? Are we good? Okay? Okay.
And Northwest is not our most impacted school by population right now.
You may, I'm thinking you're getting ready to talk about some more things, so you may cover these questions, so maybe I can table what I got here. Okay?
Yeah.
Are you going to ask them now?
I'll answer. Go ahead.
Okay. So, I looked at their cost versus benefit sheet, and I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So, from the blue plan that's being presented, we've got 714 students that will be affected, and that includes 380-plus roughly, middle schoolers. I just want to make sure I got those numbers correct.
Yeah, I'll get into that and make it really clear.
Okay. So, I'll wait for that one.
Yes.
And then, I was wanting to just clarify. I see about four or five neighborhoods that are concerned with the IPT recommendations, and then, do I read that there's a little over 10 neighborhoods that are affected by the green plus plan? Do I read that correctly?
Probably more than that. I mean, there are multiple neighborhoods, so we didn't just, just didn't count.
Well, I just counted from what you sent us on Friday, which is, that is public information.
Yeah. It's not, yes, it's public information. So, it's not, it's, we didn't, we didn't count all of the neighborhoods total that would be impacted.
Okay. I was questioning about the another realignment in one to two years. Based on just listening to the presentations, it looks like this helps us out for way more than one to two years. So, did I miss something?
Which, which plan?
The blue plan. I'm sorry.
The IPT recommendation does help. It gets our, most of our middle school capacities close to the district average of 77%. So, it almost, in fact, I think Harris Road at 87%, and we can pull that up and look at it in a minute, it actually is the highest. So, it really sets us up well at the middle school level that we will not have to realign. Now, we'll have a realignment that comes up when we build, when we rebuild the new Arbrown McAllister, or, Arbrown McAllister Elementary School, but that will not, that will not impact this middle school realignment. So, we're going to, as we continue to build schools, we'll always have to realign. But, in terms of setting it up for middle school realignment, we, like we said before, it really sets us up well for the capital plan that we have planned, and I'll show you that, too.
Yeah. I'm wondering about the, another realignment in one to two years that was suggested by one of the speakers, so maybe help me understand that.
Yeah. I mean, anything is possible, but based on the current growth that we have in our county, this sets us up so that we will not have another realignment in one or two years.
Okay.
For middle schools.
For a middle school. Correct.
Okay. And then, help me understand about the Mandarin, the young lady on the message she talked about, her Mandarin pretty much going out the door, why is she doing all this?
When I get there, will you stop me on that and ask me that question?
Okay. And then, maybe you'll talk about magnet and STEM disruptions as well?
Will.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to move on and just kind of break this down a little bit more. So, the, kind of analyzing the green plus plan from a utilization perspective. So, Harris Road utilization remains close to capacity at 97%. That allows 36 seats open until we get to 100%. So, again, if we go back and look at all of the proposed, approved, and active housing in the orange and green plus, 36 seats would be shy at 100%. It's the fastest growing student population in the area. More students would need to be moved, so we talk about realignment again in another year or two. More students would need to be moved to reduce Harris Road Middle School in order to handle future growth and development that we know is there. We're not, we're not just making that up. We know those plans are approved. Last week, 400 house, housing subdivision was approved in the Cox Mill area. So, that happened last week. The IPT recommendation reduces Harris Road utilization to 87%. To put that apples with apples, that's 165 seats before you get to 100% capacity. And it supports the Cabarrus County Schools' capital plan that you all recently voted on for Northwest area expansions, and it reduces all middle school utilization to allow for growth. So, further analysis of the green plan, looking at it from a student impact perspective. So, you just looked at, I showed you the numbers on the map. So, the community, the green plus plan proposes to move 238 students from Harris Road to Northwest Cabarrus School, Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, 347 students from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School to Winkler. That's 585, more than 585 students in these areas alone, and Harris Road Middle School is only reduced to 97%. And then, we still have 997 students that are shifted for the new middle school zone. So, the community green, the community green plus plan impacts 1,582 middle school students. The IPT recommendation impacts 1,441 middle school students. Again, overall, the community green plus plan impacts 1,873 total students, and the IPT recommendation impacts 1,714 students. And we take every one of those very seriously. So, looking at feeder patterns, that's been talked about a lot tonight and been talked about a lot. So, the community green plus plan has, elementary has 13 feeder splits. Middle school has seven feeder splits. The IPT recommendation has 11 feeder splits, splits at elementary, and middle school has seven feeder splits. Again, kind of digging into feeder patterns a little bit more, Miss Ange, to your point earlier, so what this also does, but it was not, so when we kind of dig under the scoring, this is not included in the scoring. All right? So, that's why we dig into the data when we, when we look at these scores, because data can say anything. And so, this, it breaks feeder patterns, the green plus plan breaks feeder patterns, successful feeder patterns, from Colton Webb to Jan Freese, from Wyancopt to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and from Beverly Hills to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. We talk about Mandarin, it leaves out the middle school feeder for Harrisburg Elementary School Mandarin program, requiring them to travel to Harris Road, which is a 15-mile commute. So, nobody talked, nobody is talking about the Harrisburg Mandarin program. In our program choice model, we create feeders where two or three elementary school feeders feed into a middle school. That's the exact concept that we have lined up for Mandarin. And that proposal is to have the Mandarin at the new middle school. So, it's a meet-in-the-middle spot for the Mandarin at Harrisburg and for the Mandarin at Harris Road Middle School, and we would provide hub stops.
Brian, can you, just definitely for the viewing audience, hub stops? Can you describe that just a little bit better?
Yeah. It's a pickup location for students so that they don't have to, so parents don't have to drive them, but it's an opportunity, it's maybe not as good, it's not as convenient as getting picked up in front of your house, but it's a convenient location typically at, typically at one of our schools, where large groups of students can be monitored, picked up, put on the bus, and then driven to their, to their program choice feeder school. And we've been doing that for many...
So, they spoke a lot about that.
I'm sorry?
They spoke a lot about that, about there being no option for transportation.
Yeah. We would do that. We've been doing that for many, many years with many of our programs.
Can I ask you a question about that?
So, what you're saying is, is that if they go to the new middle school at Winkler, there would be a hub stop for kids that wanted to continue to participate in the Mandarin program, to be picked up from Harris?
Yeah. So, if a student is realigned to go to Winkler, but they're in the Mandarin program, there would be a hub stop to take them to the new, to Roberta Road Middle School to participate in that Mandarin program.
I don't understand why you're saying they don't have one in Harris. Explain that to me, why it's not in the green. I don't quite get that. Why is there not one there?
I'm sorry. There is a Mandarin program at Harrisburg Elementary School.
Okay.
Yes. But, it's not mentioned in the green plus plan.
What do you mean, it's not mentioned there?
It's not addressed at all.
Because those kids have got to move. They've got to go to the new middle school.
Right. They would have to also go to the new middle school, which is why, which is why Harris Road Middle School is not a, an appropriate location for a Mandarin immersion program.
Yeah. The new middle school makes it more centralized, right?
Correct.
So, you got to, what did they need to do? Did they need to move some of those kids or something?
No. What we're proposing in our IPT recommendation is that Roberta Road Middle School becomes the language immersion Mandarin program for the county. And so, students from Harris Road Middle School would go there for Mandarin, and students from Harrisburg Elementary School would also go there for Mandarin, because they both have, they both are Mandarin, elementary Mandarin programs. So, that would be...
Well, how would the kids from Harrisburg Elementary get Mandarin? How are they going to get it?
To the middle school? Same way.
I mean, how you mean the same way? I don't...
A hub stop location and/or parents can always transport.
I mean, in the blue plan, how are they getting it?
In the IPT recommendation, they would have a hub stop opportunity, just like the students that would be coming from the Cox Mill Elementary Program.
Okay. So, they just need to add it in the green plan? Is that not it?
We've added it, and, I mean, I'm not in charge of the green plan. We've added it, we've added it in our IPT recommendation.
What he's saying is, they don't address it in their plan.
Which point does she say?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
What she's asking is, can it be added to their plan to make it better for, I guess, presentation purposes? Or to address some of these issues that they're saying that it doesn't address? Am I right, Carolyn?
Yeah. And that's what I've asked all along. We, in, last week, I said, you know, all of us work together. Okay. Well, go ahead with your...
How many grades do we have Mandarin in Harrisburg?
I'm sorry?
How many grades do we have in Mandarin in Harrisburg?
Alan, what are we up to?
Yeah. They are third grade for next year.
Third grade for next year.
For next year. So, that's still three years away before they're even in middle school.
That's correct. All right. So, continuing on with the feeder pattern, so that we discussed the satellite, discussed the satellite suggestion in the green plan. The green plan proposes to take some new developments in Harris Road District and move them to Winkler, what they, what they said was their nearest middle school. The satellite areas actually create more feeder pattern disruptions. Again, we didn't score that, because that's not part of the score, but it creates additional feeder patterns from, from a specific area. So, if you are a neighborhood in the middle of an area that already feeds the Harris Road, but you are, then go to Winkler Middle School, that's another feeder pattern for that area, and also creates, so very costly approach to transportation and creates transportation efficiencies, and it would jeopardize our transportation efficiency rating, which would then impact, we'd have less of a budget to address for transportation needs. Again, looking at the green plus plan, the community engagement impacted neighborhoods, the community green plus plan proposes to move more communities who have not had the same opportunity to realize that they are now up for consideration to be moved. So, these are some of those communities. I think, actually, one lady was here representing one of those communities tonight. So, communities such as the most acres, after Village, Country, Acre, Hunt and Forest, and you can read the rest, Oak Park, Wellington Chase, and on and on. So, the folks that live in, and there are more than just that, that's not all the neighborhoods, but those are some of the neighborhoods that would be impacted by the green plus plan who have not had the opportunity, because that plan has not been put forward as a recommendation.
So, we would obviously give them that opportunity if that's the case. It just pushes us, pushes us all down, down the road a little while longer.
Correct.
If that was the case.
And then, the further analysis of the green plan, when we look at this, so the, in the green plan, Winkler Middle School, Middle School would split four ways. The high school would be small groups of students being split apart from classroom rates. IPT recommendation makes sure that neighborhoods and larger groups are moving together. So, what we did for Winkler in the IPT recommendation is there are two schools that Winkler feeds, would feed into. It'd feed into Cox Mill High School, 46% of the students, and then, 54% of the students would feed into West Cabarrus High Schools. So, large groups of students traveling together through, through two feeder patterns that come out of Winkler Middle School. Now, Winkler, the utilization for Northwest Middle School drops to 77%, which does not support the future capital plan for that area. So, we don't need to drop, we don't need to drop the utilization for Northwest Middle School as much as they're, as much as they're proposing, because we capture that in the capital plan down the road. We missed the fact that Winkler is at 100, is at, well, it's in 98% capacity right now. Our most urgent middle schools are Harris Road Middle School, Winkler Middle School at almost 100%. They're at 98, 99%. And then, Hickory Ridge, Hickory Ridge Middle School is next, and it's at 92% capacity. So, those are our three most urgent that we actually address in the IPT recommendation. So, again, you've seen some of these slides, but the middle school realignment, so these are the criteria that everybody talks about, the student impact. So, I've talked to you about that. Student impact is less through the IPT recommended, recommended plan. Utilization, we improve utilization at elementary, middle school, high school. We improve demographic balance to the district average, improve feeder patterns, we improve, we address future growth really, really well. And then, we also have chosen a plan that's the best for transportation efficiency. So, when you look at utilization, and these are just kind of reminders now, so it gets Roberta Road, it's at 83% utilization. That allows for that program, that Mandarin program choice to come in there and utilize that building really, really well. Other middle schools that are impacted. So, again, remember, this is at every level we're impacting utilization. So, at middle school, you see Harris Road goes from 116 to 87, almost a 30% decrease in their capacity. Winkler goes from 98 to 81%. So, you see they're right at, you know, teetering on, right at capacity. And then, Hickory Ridge Middle School, another growing area at 92%, it drops them to 76%. So, there's a lot of benefits there for schools other than just Harris Road. And we look at elementary, Patriots benefits by lowering their capacity. Harrisburg has lots of capacity right now, so we add some students to Harrisburg in this process, and we align feeder patterns for Harrisburg, to, we take a piece of Harrisburg and send to Pitts. Harrisburg and send to Pitts. Pitts then has one feeder school, it feeds directly into the new middle school where it had three feeder schools prior. And then the high school, J.M. Robinson, has lots of capacity. So we, we fill seats there and we reduce Hickory Ridge High School, which you see is at 111%. We're able to get that below 100, where we need that growth. So we address the northern part, we address the southern part, we address utilization and capacity at every level by still having less impact on students than the community recommended plan. So you see there's 132 students impacted at elementary, 141 at high school, and 1,441 at middle school. And I know this has been a question, how many kids are impacted twice? There are eight, and we take care of them because they will be impacted, actually, their sophomore year at high school, where they would have to then make a choice to either go to J.M. Robinson High School or go to Hickory Ridge High School. So we're gonna catch them in ninth grade and say, do you wanna go to Hickory Ridge High School, or do you wanna go to J.M. Robinson? So they get a legacy option before that, before they ever start their high school career for those eight students. So we address all eight of those. Demographics, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question for you. And it may be here, and I just don't see it, but with the green plan, what does it do to the new middle school as far as enrollment numbers?
So the, my understanding is that the new, that the green plan basically adopted the blue plan recommendation for the middle school. Because originally, the green, the green plus, the green plan did not have a recommendation for a middle school. So there was no, they didn't have a, they didn't have a zone, they didn't create a zone for the middle school. So when we gave them that feedback, then they came back and said, well, we'll just, we'll just use this one. And I believe it was, was it the blue?
So what is that number? What is their recommendation? The Green Plus Plan, what does that leave, what would it leave Roberta?
Uh, Roberta Middle School?
It's nine, around 990.
It's about the same, yeah, so it's about 990.
Okay.
Yeah, because they mirrored it after the, the blue plan.
And this is probably not the right time for this question, but I wasn't on the board last time, but, so Cox Mill is at 100 and what, Cox Mill High School?
It's about 115, 116%.
And we didn't address that last time?
Uh, I, I wasn't.
You weren't?
I wasn't involved with the last realignment plan for high school.
Because Robinson's got what right now?
They're about 68, 67, 68%, which is why we wanna increase some of their capacity.
Yes, okay.
And that's how we, that's how we take care of Hickory Ridge High School and drop them down. So demographics are improved in terms of the balance, elementary and middle, and high school remained largely unchanged.
I think to answer Tim's question, I think it was the students north of 73, that was the line. The line was set north of 73, so that was the only impact.
And we talked about feeder patterns, but once again, we, we have elementary to middle school feeder patterns that are relatively similar efficiency of splits. So you see Pitt School Road Elementary School goes from a three-way split to 100% feeder to the new school. Some schools gained a split as a result of the new middle school and realignment. I think Harrisburg would be one of those that gained a new split. So, you know, when you have, when you add more schools, it becomes difficult not to split sometimes. We actually reduced overall the number of feeder patterns that we have in this recommendation. In the middle of the high school, you see the removal, we removed the four-way split for Winkler, what it currently is, and then basically about a 50-50 balance between Cox Mill and, I said 46, 54 is the split there between Cox Mill and West Cabarrus High School. So from a transportation perspective, it's an efficient zone for the new middle school. So the new Roberta Road has a zone that captures students near and around the school, providing capacity relief for schools in the area. It's overall best plan for distances, and yes, some people's rides are gonna be longer, but also some people's rides are gonna be shorter in this process. And then when we look at the average travel times, it keeps us within the district average on our travel times within this plan. When you talk about program choice, I know we've kind of talked about that a lot. I know one of the things that comes up a lot is the STEM, about, we talked about the STEM pathways and how some of those feeder patterns are broke, that we already have successful STEM patterns in our district, and we do not want to break those. That is not, not in our best interest to do that, not in students' best interest to do that. We also have IB, and there's a lot of questions about, well, is it bad to go into IB and then out of IB? And we currently actually have set that precedent. We have Carl Fur Elementary School that does feed into Winkler, and it's not an IB elementary school. So Mr. Williams, you wanna come up and maybe just say, I know there's been a lot of questions about IB, so I decided to bring our resident expert on that to answer questions because I know there's concerns about, parents are nervous about their kids, students going into an IB program.
Good.
Another short Chris guy.
So I guess the, kind of the most important points on it is that IB at the middle years program is designed to be a whole school model. It's not designed as a separate program, is designed for any child to be able to come into the program and exit the program in grade 6, 8 with no, with no consequence, right? So a child, we have a significant number of kids that move into our building every year, 100, 125 kids a year, maybe a touch more than that, who move into Winkler. Those students join IB at whatever spot they arrive. For any, in, in terms of what kids learn, the reality is, we teach the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, as does every other middle school in Cabarrus County. Students, we had a student move into us from Northwest a week or so ago. Student was surprised because they started an eighth grade science class and was worried, you know, you guys are gonna be in a different spot. And the answer is, we follow the curriculum documents for Cabarrus County schools exactly the same way that Northwest follows the curriculum documents for Cabarrus County schools. So students that move into the NYPD program, the IBM, the middle years program, they pick up at exactly the same spot that all of the other middle school students do in our county. The, the pieces that look a little different don't have anything to do with what we teach, right? We teach the standards, we teach the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. What looks different at Winkler a bit that I would argue is beneficial for all students is that all of the students at Winkler had the, take a world language. At our other middle schools, that's an elective that students can take as a, as an IB school, that's a course that all of our students take. And all of our students at Winkler take a, an arts course each year. So those are electives that students certainly are going to take at other middle schools because they have to fill out their schedule, right? Like, those are the things that schools offer. At Winkler, what we come out of it with is a guarantee that students are going to get those courses. You know, ultimately, what we're aiming to do in an IB school is educate students around the, what we call learner profile traits, what IB calls learner profile traits. We're helping them to become global citizens. So for example, we want them to be enquirers, we want them to learn to be caring, we want them to learn to be knowledgeable, we want them to learn to explore. Those are the things that we're aiming to teach, and I would argue that's really what all middle schools are aiming to teach, we're just using the IB language to do that. So ultimately, students coming from a non-IB elementary school are at neither an advantage or a disadvantage when they come to Winkler. If a student moves out of IB back into a regular school, they're at neither an advantage or a disadvantage. If they choose to go all the way through and they finish in eighth grade and they move on to high school at a non-IB school, they're at neither a disadvantage or, I would argue they're actually at an advantage because we have given them kind of a guaranteed educational experience that quite honestly is as good as any school in the world because we're meeting this, this high level of criteria. What it doesn't mean is additional work, it doesn't mean more homework, it doesn't mean more rigorous, because again, what we do is we teach the standard course of study, and students can move in and out of that at any point. I'll also point out that a couple of our other schools are also, they're not IB, but Harris Road, for example, is a North Carolina global school, right? Did very similar work to what Winkler did, using a different accreditation and authorization path, you know, pathway. And so, you know, all of our schools are really doing the same work, but I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that there's really no, there are no barriers, any, we don't have any special courses, and anything that we do offer, for example, we get some students that come in the eighth grade and they haven't taken Spanish before, we offer some on-ramping courses. So we've built that in for students who come to us late and don't have those prerequisite courses when they get there. Any questions I might answer for you?
So what do you say to the student that says, I don't know how to prepare or plan for IB?
How to prepare or plan for IB? There really is no preparation or planning for it. If you're coming out of fifth grade, we're gonna set that up in sixth grade. And our students that are coming from Weddington would certainly have done some of the, they would have some of the understanding of the learner profile traits. However, the PYP program at Weddington and the NYPD program at Winkler are not the same program. And so students that come to us in sixth grade, there is no planning or preparation because we would do that work with students when they arrive. And we also have on-ramping pieces for students who arrive to us late after the sixth grade to make sure that they understand the language that we're, the IB language that we're using.
So for kids that are maybe struggling with this transition to IB, you're saying that there are already programs in place for those, those children?
Yeah, we support those students when we come in, and, you know, ultimately, you know, I, I, at the risk of sounding distal, our, our results speak for themselves. We're giving kids a guaranteed excellent education, as do the rest of our schools. And so, you know, ultimately, we, we have a school that's ranked third in the state for academic growth. And so, you know, the, we have those spots built in all the way along the way to support all students, no matter where they come into the program.
Any other comments or questions?
How do you keep parents involved that may not necessarily live closer to the school?
Yeah, so, you know, ultimately, what we've learned through the pandemic actually is Microsoft Teams has become a very good tool for that. So our PTO is actually meeting on Teams, and will probably continue to do so as we look down the road. You know, we open up those opportunities for parents, you know, one of the kind of claims to fame is the community that we build in our, in our school. We are a community, right? We're, we call ourselves a family. And so what I would imagine for folks is, once they get there and their students get involved and, and their children, you know, have a good experience as they would at any other school, those parents are kind of gonna naturally be there. But we ultimately, as we kind of look down the road at this transition, we'll be building those opportunities, both face-to-face and using the technologies that we've learned to use during the pandemic.
Board members, comments or questions?
Thank you. He is smart. You see why I called him up here? Thank you, Mr. Williams. And then we, so anything else on program choice?
So if they don't want IB, they do have an alternative, is that correct? If they don't want the IB, do they have an alternative, not at the school, at a different school?
So there, there is an opt-out option, and we have, alternative. So we do have designated opt-out schools for whole programs, for whole program schools. So for instance, if a parent did not want to participate in IB at Winkler, they wouldn't be able to attend Winkler and not participate in IB, but the designated opt-out school for Winkler Middle right now is Northwest Cabarrus. So they would have the option without transportation to attend at Northwest Cabarrus as opposed to Winkler. And every full program school has an opt-out, one designated opt-out school in the area that parents can choose.
All right, so accounting for future growth, so I think that.
Brian, I'm sorry. I still don't understand the Mandarin. I think you're, were you gonna talk about that on that last night?
We, we can, yes. So what, what is your question about Mandarin?
So when the little girl says, I'm doing all of this for nothing, I don't understand why she would say that.
Maybe she doesn't know that we have, so we're gonna have Roberta, Roberta Road Middle School designated as a Mandarin immersion program for middle school. So she, she will have the choice to a, to maintain her status in the Mandarin language immersion program through Roberta Road Middle School. With a hub stop or self-transport.
That'll no longer be at Harris Road?
Correct. All right, so accounting for future growth, so the plan, and if we need to look into the data, we can, but the plan clearly sets us up for our future growth. It's proactive, it reduces our middle school capacity as close to that 77% averages as possible. It also addresses the southern part of the county, which has not been talked about a lot in this process with Patriots, Harrisburg, and then Hickory Ridge Middle School and Hickory Ridge High School, as well as accounting for J.M. Robinson and Pitt School Road Elementary School. And then the northwestern part of the county, students move from Harris Road Middle School to provide for leaf while also accounting for future growth that you saw represented by those little colored houses on that map previously. And then it aligns with, and you've seen this before, the, the capital plan that we have in place to address, and you've kind of looked, if you look down at number nine on that list, the renovation of Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, so as soon as Northwest Cabarrus High School is built, then the renovation on the old Northwest Cabarrus High School can begin, that creates 300 additional seats for that area and then can account for any growth that happens in the north, northwest section during that time. And that's the preliminary site plan, and then I'll answer any questions that you have.
Just wanna add one thing, that this board did vote for that plan.
For the what?
For the plan, the growth, the future plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, we voted on that back in, was it December or January, maybe?
But that can be changed too, it's not set in stone.
Right, it's not set in stone, and we, you know, my understanding is, over the years, it gets revisited every year, every other year, and some items may be moved around based on what you learn about, you know, growth, how quick or slow certain growth is projected to be in the area. So that, that definitely can be. I know in fall of 2019, we all met with, well, those of you that were on the board at the time, met with the county commissioners and presented that capital plan to our, in a joint meeting with the county commissioners.
And we had to do that because it had to be a part of the budget, so.
Correct. And that's the $291 million that, that Mr. Walter referred to earlier.
Ms. Adka?
I just wanna ask, you know, what have we changed in this realignment process that addresses decreasing capacity issues for the future? I mean, are we looking at having to do another realignment in what, how many years? Because I think what I hear the community saying to us as a school system is, they buy houses based off of where they go to school, and then we just come in and move them around. So I understand their frustration, but I just want us to talk about, what have we done in this process that's changed that, so that addresses that for them?
Yeah, I think what we're, what we've, what we've done in this process is to reduce capacities at middle school as much as possible, knowing that when you look at that capital plan that I just showed you, that the Northwest Cabarrus High School renovation to become the new Northwest Cabarrus Middle School gives us 300 more seats, but that's, that's, that's it for a while. So that, there's no brand-new middle school on that capital plan for a while. So we know, we knew going into this, like, we had to greatly reduce the capacities at our middle schools to be able to sustain that over time. So that's one of the things that we addressed in that. And I'll just say, what we actively do, and I'll say we, but it's Frances Lane does this, is that the, the planners actually come to us and ask for impact statements, and we'll send those to you from time to time when we do those, those impact statements. So if we, and I think you did it on the 400 house development that was just approved, right? So for the city of Concord, she submitted an impact statement to the schools in that area. So at least our city and our county is aware of the impact that it is having on our schools.
Thank you.
Well, for a lot of the, I don't know, some of y'all have been on for quite a while. And the last time we did the rezoning, I mean, the last time we did proper on, we were told, hey, we're gonna be flat in five years. Well, here we are now, so these numbers, they're not, it's, it's been five years, we're not flat, and I don't think we're gonna be flat. So these growth projections, I don't think they're worth probably this paper that we're, I'm sitting here holding. So I don't know, we're, I mean, cause I can tell you, five years, we're not gonna, we're, we're not seeing this. So I don't know, I mean, it, nobody's got a crystal ball. So this 77%, this 87%? So this 77%, this 87%, I don't think it's worth a hill of beans. I'm so, I mean, I'm just being very frank with you. So 97%, 87%?
So Ms. Carpenter, let's, let's maybe do something here a little more productive. Mr. Copper, you're on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
So would you like to address that statement? On your projections? That was, that was during a, two realignments ago, so.
Yeah. So we have forecasted enrollment. We did a demographic study a few years ago that showed some growth and stability and some decline. And we still believe in what we've seen in enrollments that you're going to have growth in some areas and decline in other areas. The estimates that we have been providing have been based off of students that we know are living there. And, and so, you know, in terms of things not materializing as planned, the things, if, if, I haven't, I'd have to go back and look at all of the realignment to understand the full history, just refresh myself on the full history. But there were a lot of things that were recommended in the last realignment by the prior committee that weren't taken into consideration by the prior board that caused some difference in enrollments of the schools. And in addition to that, there are other factors that cause enrollment to kind of fluctuate from what's estimated. But the most important thing here to remember, which is also in this recommendation, is that the plan gives as much flexibility as possible so that the school can adapt to unforeseen changes. If you grow faster, if you don't decline or stabilize as much as expected, you have more ability to withstand unforeseen changes in enrollment from year to year.
Yeah, I would just say what we, and we haven't done a lot of saying we're going to be flat or we're going to grow, you know, what we know are our current ratios of growth and things like that that we've seen and those trends. But what we know is what I showed you on that map. We know where developments have been approved. We know where they're active developments. We know where they're under construction. So those are the ones that we know. And you saw how active that is in that Harris Road Middle School area.
I just want to make a comment, I think is accurate. I wasn't on the board. But I think that the last board probably, didn't they make some adjustments to the last plan that may have caused some-
I wasn't, I wasn't involved.
Is that right, Mr. Copper?
Yes, sir. There were some adjustments that were made to the committee's recommendation after the recommendation was provided that gave, that kept more students in schools. And they were, they ended up being a higher utilization than what the original recommendation was from the committee.
And that's probably why Cox Mill is where it's at and Robinson's where it's at. So maybe this board is, we're not in that business.
Ms. Carpenter, does that, are you good or are you?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, a question again from Mr. Copper. Explain again how the public advisory committee was different this time than the last time and how you used that committee. They didn't come up with the recommendations, right?
Yes, sir. And so we, we established a process for Cabarrus County to be able to get, to enable you to weather the COVID storm and adapt to a virtual process. And in doing so, we built, we wanted to make sure that we had as many stakeholders and as much input as possible from different segments of the community. And because of the need to have flexibility and potentially make changes to meeting dates and times on a short notice due to things that were happening with the pandemic, we felt it was good to have a planning team made up of the IPT that we demonstrated to you to have that flexibility, people who could adapt to change pretty quickly. But we enabled the public, further public input through the creation of a public advisory committee. And that was a group that was sort of a focus group to get, to get some input from, from parents and members of the public that live in different areas of the community to give us input, but not to formulate a recommendation. The recommendation came from the, from the IPT. So we added a different stakeholder in this process and we built it so that it could be able, flexible and be, so that we could be here giving you recommendations instead of having unforeseen delays that could have occurred.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I just wanted to say Holly and I did take a bus tour on Friday as well. And one of the things that I heard brought up this evening was regarding the bus, the bus traveling further distances. Is that going to cost the county more money because we're, we're traveling now further from one to the other? And one of the things that we talked about on that bus tour was that the buses are going to be utilized regardless. So it doesn't matter if they're driving. They're still going to be on the road for those hours either way. Art, I don't know if you want to come up and kind of talk a little bit about just the plans as far as the routes that you guys have come up with. But I think it might be a good idea to hear, hear from you.
Yes, ma'am. You are correct. The buses are going to be used and utilized to the, to the nth degree. We will make sure that they are efficient. And what I mean efficient, they will be loaded to the maximum, the capacity that they needed to be. So those, we have our, our bus routes will be dictated by our ridership. So until we know what that ridership is in that particular area, it's very difficult for us to understand what, how many, how many kids to put on the bus and how many resources that we need to put in that area. So, you know, we've, we've been, we've, the Transportation Department has gone through three other redistricting initiatives by the, by the district. We've all been very successful in that. Our three-tier busing system is a very efficient model, given to the size of our district. We, our confidence is very high that we will be able to reach all of our goals and maintain the three-tier busing system going forward. So I don't see any issues with, with busing. Might be a little longer, but definitely, definitely within our scope of our tier system. So I don't see any issue with that.
And they had also brought up another issue, which, I mean, I get it. I used to be in insurance, so I understand. So if we're traveling further, is it going to change any of our, you know, insurance benefits as far as for our buses? Are we going to increase premiums, anything like that?
No, ma'am. The, the school bus is a piece of state property. It belongs to the state of North Carolina. So they hold the insurance policy onboard the school bus. So if anything happens, it's a, it's a piece of state property. And if we have to, we'll file a claim with the state of North Carolina. And they take care of that through the tour claims division. So it's, it's no cost to the, to the district for school buses.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Before you, I was going to ask you a question.
Yes.
As I kept saying, is Concord Mills Boulevard, are we concerned about that thoroughfare and crossing 85? What are your, what's your thoughts on that?
No, sir. I am not concerned about that. I, I think in the bus tour, they took you along the route that they wanted to take you or the, the route that the planner designed. I think that was either through Harris Road, I think they took you through, or Poplar Tent, if I understand correctly.
You wouldn't use Concord Mills or you would?
While the construction is still going on, I would not use that right now. Until that construction kind of settles down, I, I would prefer to go another direction.
But you're okay with buses crossing 85?
Yes, I am. We do it every day.
Ms. Blackwell, is that it or you got anything else? Okay. Ms. Sandage?
I was able to send questions and you said that is, that's been made public, correct? The, oh, good gracious.
I'm not, I'm not sure about the last set of questions that you sent me, but yeah, we've been trying to-
I'm talking about the ones on Friday.
I don't know. I don't think we've made those public yet.
No. Is there a reason why I thought they were? He said this was, that it was going to be added to. I didn't know what your acronym meant. Hold on, I'm sorry. Uh, WW?
It's a communication tool we use for the board.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what that meant. I'm sorry. So this, that hasn't been made public, is what you're saying?
The questions that you asked me, but we can, we can put those on the FAQ. I mean, that was Friday and I think I may have responded to them Sunday, Saturday or Sunday.
I don't, I think you responded Friday. I guess what I'm getting at is that's kind of some of the concerns that they were talking about as far as communication is concerned, that they're not made aware of what we are discussing. And I think that that's important to know, that that kind of supports what they're saying. I guess I'm still a little concerned about this, the Mandarin, you know, those hub stops and what that looks like. I know you talked about, you know, maybe showing us what a neighborhood stop would look like and we, we really haven't seen that. I mean, I get it. We, we got to redistrict. We've got to make sure that we give our, our schools some, some capacity. And, I mean, I hear all of that. I just want to make sure that we are communicating with our public at the end of the day as best as we can. I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, board members. Well, we have to decide if we're going to vote on this tonight or if we're going to ask for additional information. I would like somebody to start the conversation. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I think the expectation is we're going to be tabling this to at least the next meeting. I think there's a presentation that was done by Brian. We have a presentation that was given to us, but the public today, I think it's just only fair that there's time to digest some of that before we vote on anything.
So I would like to hear from the rest of the board members. Ms. Adcock?
I agree with Mr. Walter.
Ms. Carpenter?
I do too. And, and, I mean, additional information. One of the things that said that the Green Plus Plan didn't have anything for Harrisburg, give them a chance to do that. Again, another group said, "Well, hey, what about me"? Again, give everybody a chance to say, "Hey, happy, happy". Everybody kind of get together and say, "Hey, let's meet halfway in between. Let's come up with something that's going to be good for everybody and let's meet halfway in between. Let's make this work for everybody." That's the way I feel about it. And give a month for that to happen.
Okay. Ms. Far?
Well, I came prepared to vote, but I'll go along with the rest of you guys. If that's what, what we need to do, then that's what we need to do.
Ms. Blackwell?
Well, number one, I know that not everybody's going to be happy because that's just not the way this ever works. But if it's the board's pleasure to wait another month, I'm fine with that. I think we have a lot of information to go over. And I also want some of the, the parents who have listened to this presentation that you guys did tonight. So thank you for doing that. But also to come back with, if they have any further questions regarding the information that they heard tonight as well. So I'm fine if we table it till May.
Ms. Sandage, I'm sure you're in agreement. Okay. So I need a motion that we table the recommendation for the realignment of the new middle school.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. I have a motion by Mr. Walter and a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, hearing none. We will table that until the May work session. And with that, we need to, we've added, I'm sorry, Ms. Sandage?
If we are tabling this, is there some expectation that there will be additional information by some timeframe? I don't know if that needs to be clarified. Because I mean, if we're going to just discuss the same thing, it doesn't make sense to table it.
So what I'd like to do is kind of what we did at the work session. Everyone send in your questions or your requests for information of what you want to see. The staff update what they've currently presented. Get that to us. We have until the work session, of course, now, so we have some time. But just whatever you need, whatever you heard tonight, whatever questions you have or updated information, send it to us on email, just like we just did. You know, I feel like we, y'all, you did a really good job for that this week. You've heard some stuff tonight that I guess you needed some additional. So whatever that is, just get it to us as quickly as you can so that we can, you know, present it at the work session. Is that good?
Yeah, and just any questions that we get answers to. Brian, if we could just make that available to the public, I mean, especially anything that I send you as it relates to a question, if we could just make that, like, added to the frequently asked questions. Okay. And then if we can make that known, like, we added questions to the frequently asked questions page. I know that's a lot to ask for, but it just shows that we're over-communicating.
So Brian, I guess probably one of the things I think should happen tonight is anything that you feel like is not in that frequently asked questions be added because now it is public information. So whatever y'all think tonight that we, that came out of here for this, maybe-
Don't post this document.
Perfect. That's exact, great. That would be great. All right. So now we need to move to 12.05. And that is, I need a motion to approve the policies on first reading for 3225, 4312 slash 7320 technology responsible use and also for 4600 student fees. Now I have a motion for those approvals or is, does anyone have comments or questions?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock and a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
So all except Mr. Walter opposed. All right. Motion passes six to one. Ms. Burns, I don't think we need you tonight. Thank you. Okay. And with that, the board does not have any reason now to convene in closed session. So we will say goodnight to the viewing audience. We will see you at our May work session. And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. I have a motion by Mr. Fur and a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good night.